Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, which is called to order today at 6:12 PM. Madam Clerk, may you please take roll call?
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
President.
Moby Dune.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston is absent. Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
President.
Tam Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Wenzel, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, councilmen.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Next up, we have agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of August 26, 2025 as submitted.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of August 12, 2025. Before anybody reads it, I do ask that, please, if you're showing up to this council meeting, you know, for the sake of the residents and for, you know, your role, take part in saying either aye, yea, or nay. Thank you.
Council Chair.
Yep, Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of August 12, 2025, as outlined in 4-8.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Next up, we have public hearings and public comments. I know a couple of you guys have called me and asked me for an additional minute. I will honor those times. It is time you can talk and discuss about anything. I want to move it over to Zoom first. So let's go ahead and go over to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom about any type of public comments? None? Okay, let's go to public comments in person. Anyone here? Come on up, ma'am. I've been waiting all day for you.
Marjorie Pasquale, Syracuse Street.
How you doing, Marjorie?
Fine, thank you. My purpose here is, I just wanted to mention that I feel very fortunate to live in a community with such great libraries. I love my libraries. Their staff is great. They, you don't, you can't find something, or you don't have a book, or they don't have the book, they'll get it for you. And they are just tremendous. And when I get family and friends from out of town, I always brag about our libraries. But there's one thing that myself and a few other people disagree with, and that is the chip machines. I don't know who, we were curious who put them there, who owns them, but why would there be chip machines in the library?
Time out. Pause your time, please. Chip machines, are you seeing like bags of chips? Are you seeing vending machines?
Hmm.
You're saying you don't want vending machines there?
Correct.
Because?
Because, well, they're messy. I mean, people who eat chips, we all know, they're eaten by our hands, not by spoons. Your hands are greasy. You're going to touch the keys of a keyboard. You're going to be looking in a book with greasy hands, licking your fingers maybe. And it doesn't make sense to me, or to us.
Pause your time, I'm sorry. Are you seeing like a, are you seeing a lot more messier computers and keyboards?
No, no, I'm seeing nothing. But, I mean, it's very obvious. Chips do, I mean, chips are a messy treat, or a messy snack.
Is there only chips in there? Are there like snack bars, other peanuts?
Chips. I've just seen chips. I mean, I didn't go with magnifying glass, and no one has mentioned to me anything other than chips. They just said, I mean, I'm saying chips like, maybe, could be Doritos, could be, you know, potato chips, that type of chip.
Awesome.
Yes, and it makes no sense to me, and to my friends.
I can tell you that the good news is, you are right. We do have the best libraries in the world, in the world. And we also have the best library director in the world. We're actually so lucky to have him.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
And we have amazing residents that live in Syracuse that praise our libraries.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I'm not.
Maybe you can have a conversation with our library director, who's sitting here in the audience.
Concerning what?
Concerning the chips of vending machines.
Is it up to him to remove them?
I mean, we're going to follow his direction in any direction he says, because he's the director of both libraries, correct?
Council Chair, I think it's only allowed in designated areas to food and drink, correct, Director?
No. Rode facility?
Yep. If you want, you can come on up.
Well, I mean, I was, it was mentioned that, you know, children would bring in food anyway. Now, that makes no sense to me, and some others, because, it's just like saying, don't put up a red light because you won't stop, you know? America is what it is because of laws and rules, and we follow them. So I'm sure if he said, don't bring in chips.
Yes, ma'am.
Wouldn't do it. But I was curious, who owns those machines?
I have no idea.
It's the vending machine company that called us when I put it out.
Let's hear, let's hear from.
Okay, so, anyway, in terms of vending machines, we've morphed this policy over the years. There was a time when I went to libraries and there was no food, there was no drink, there was no water, there was nothing. And that's the policy we enforced for a long time, I'd say about first eight to 10 years. But eventually, it gets difficult to enforce it for a couple of reasons. One, it's tough to tell kids you can't eat anything. You can't eat pretzels, you can't eat goldfish, you can't eat chips. It gets difficult over time, you know? It's like, people are getting out of school and they want to eat something. So it gets difficult to do it for that reason. Also, if you're talking 100 to 150 people in a building, it gets really difficult to enforce equitably throughout, you know, adults, kids, everybody in the building, making sure they don't eat or drink anything. So we moved away from that. And I'd say, it was interesting, because when I talked to you earlier, Marjorie, I was curious, because I thought, you know, I thought many libraries had moved away from this policy. And I, so I actually went to websites of 23 different communities, and I found out it was about 50/50, some libraries that had moved on and some that hadn't. But the biggest issue is that enforcement giving kids something to eat. But I'll say this, we do police a mess. So if somebody leaves a mess, regardless of whether it's a bag of chips, or Coke, or whatever it is, we tell them to clean it up, or they're not going to be able to do it in the future. So, but yeah, we take it seriously, we enforce it for a long time, but libraries are just moving towards allowing usually light snacks, like vending machine snacks, and covered beverages, but not like warm food, that kind of thing. So unless it's a program room.
My question to you is, are you seeing a mess? How long have you had these vending machines?
Couple of years.
Are you seeing a change in like a mess, or sticky keyboards, or things like that?
Not really any more than kind of was before. I can't say, you know, it's probably, it probably has increased a bit, I'm not going to say it's zero.
But I'm sure it's also got better since COVID.
Right, right. So, and, but yeah, that's why we started putting them in, just so people had a couple more options. And we had actually had a lot of patrons that asked for them. And there's even people that want coffee machines and drinks. Currently, it's just a chip machine, a couple of other things, but.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Council Chair.
If you guys want to have a conversation, and I think you two should also have a conversation, maybe exchange numbers or whatnot.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Director?
I'm sorry.
This is a vending machine company providing these vending machines and restocking them?
Yes.
Does the library get any percentage of the profits?
Yes, it was a higher percentage. I don't know off the top of my head what it is, but I believe it was like 10 or 15%. It's a little higher than the average percentage I've been getting from a lot of other machines. They're pretty Johnny on the spot with replenishing it. I call, and within, usually the same day, if they'll either replenish it, or if the machine jams up for whatever reason, they've come and replenished it really quick.
That's awesome.
So I think we've done a pretty good job with it.
Do you know how much money they generate?
Like $60, $80 a month.
$60 a month.
For us, $60, $80 a month.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can I?
Yeah, I'll give you 30 more seconds.
Yeah, I'm just, I just wanted to say, I totally, I don't agree with that at all. I mean, it's obvious chips are messy, and it makes no sense to me. And think about it, if people go through, that excuse that can't handle it, we don't want a red light, so take it out and cars can crash. I mean, we have rules, and if you have a rule, they follow it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ma'am, I know you asked for an additional minute.
Good evening, everyone.
We've got three minutes.
Angela Venaigis, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. First, I want to say, I was wondering why our Airbnb issue isn't on the agenda this week?
Because it had, it needed more time, we couldn't just rush it on air. A week wasn't enough, not even a week.
Okay.
Wednesday to Tuesday wasn't, it was less than a week.
Well, I just, it's been a year already. I just want, don't want to see this falling behind and days passing.
We also don't want to rush it too.
No, I know, we've been through it, but I just, residents are curious what's going on, and I live next door to one, so I just want this taken care of. Then another issue I have, and Councilman Saab's been working on it with me, is a home that's next door to me on the other side, a rental home, that since 2017, I paid my $6 to get the five pages of ordinance violations that's been written up on this home, from blight, no CFOs, rats, vermin, illegal parking on the grass. The last time I called on them was the 6th of this month, and it took them till Monday to come out and take a look at the property. I just think 20 days is a long time, and being that this is an ongoing problem, I thought I would read a letter that I got from our ordinance department back on January of 2023, to respond when the gentleman was parking on his grass in the backyard. And it says, "Good afternoon, the ordinance department never complied this issue out. What happened at court is that the defendant was ordered to pay a compliance fine, and that was the end of the case. We now have a new prosecutor, and along with him, some of the council members are trying to have this corrected at the court's end. This along with several other issues that are still an issue, such as blighted yards, the defendants are only being ordered to pay a court fine, and that's the end of the case." So are we still just allowing people to pay a fine and not fix the issue? What good does it do to give them a fine, and I still got to look at weeds in my yard that are four feet tall, and bushes that are as high as the power lines? What's going on? Does anybody have an answer?
I do. Ask the administration.
Yeah, if you're.
Oh, I can't, the mayor's not here. He's the one who leads the city. Sorry, Roger, but you know.
No, okay. I mean, if you're asking, no. If we do a compliance, they have to show pictures, and they have to show ordinance officers that they've fixed, that they've addressed the issue, fixed the issue.
Okay, if the issue, if the issue's fixed, then I have pages of ordinances here where I'm complaining about the same thing, and supposedly it says they've complied, and the house is still a mess.
Okay, I don't know if specifically if they haven't cut the grass after they complied two weeks, I don't know, but I will check in and see. Just leave it for me, and I will look at it. I address everyone personally.
Roger, it's not even, it's just about the grass. They were, they actually had somebody come out and cut the grass today. According to the ordinance officer that was out here on Monday, not only they are ordering that bushes to be removed up against my privacy fence, because they're starting to pull up my fence, and there's poisonous weeds growing back in there.
I've looked at your property, I've walked your property.
My property is fine.
I will take a look at exactly what you, I've come out, I will come out on the street, I've met residents at their places who've complained about their neighbors, because I believe exactly what you're saying.
Five years, Roger, nothing has changed.
I agree.
Five years.
I had a car, I had a car sitting there.
Just like the Cadillac that sits on the corner of Cronin House. Flat tires, busted out windows. Five years, reappeared again, you know.
We had one for 10 years. I removed with Vince.
Thank you.
My attention, we got it done within two weeks. I will follow up with what you're saying, and I will talk with ordinance, okay?
And I would like to point out, our police department, I like to give you guys kudos, you guys have been out there giving tickets, been seeing you out there catching speeders, violations on garbage cans. Love you guys, you guys are doing a great job, keep up the good work.
We love you, Ange.
Thanks.
Go on vacation, Ange is going to watch my dog Sophie, so.
Mohammed Jenny, 1927 Evangeline, Dearborn Heights. Let me start with a quick story. I have five kids, and I have my baby daughter starting 10th grade this year, and the reason why I'm bringing that up, you guys can do the math. What happened to the crosswalk?
We approved it a few months ago.
No, I'm sorry, I think it was approved a year ago.
No, actual reconstruction. Mr. Deeb.
Okay, so what's, what's the story? I mean, this, another year started, summer went by, and nothing got done. So I'm here to, I mean, guys, I've been working on this for over 15 years. This is crazy.
Council, in our presentation, we indicated that this project was MDOT funded. MDOT puts it out to bid. The last we heard from MDOT, and we follow them constantly, is September of this year. They put it out to bid, they manage the construction, it's their project, they're paying for it. It is, it is scheduled for September. We had a grant.
Because I thought you guys got awarded monies, and you had money set aside.
Yeah, but Shadiv, yeah, I thought it was, yeah.
Am I crazy? Wasn't this something that's been going on for years?
Yeah, yeah, I thought we got grand money.
Money was set aside? Wasn't the money set aside?
No.
What happened to the lady who?
Stop, stop, stop. Let me answer. First, let me give you a question. What happened to the lady that took you there?
The, that was, that was done, so we moved the project further out.
How long ago was that?
I'm not here to answer you, okay? The project is.
Can you answer that?
Give them some space.
Mr. Jenny, just direct your question to the Council Chair, please.
Yeah, yeah, direct your questions to me.
Okay. You authorized the local share of the project, the 20% of the funding project, so you authorized the local share. The project has always been SAMCOG and MDOT funded. SAMCOG grant-funded the project from day one. So we got delayed initially because of the design was not approved by that one woman that took us to MDOT, and we lost the case, so we moved the project further out. But the project has always been funded by MDOT and SAMCOG. So 80%, you approved the 20%, it's still, it's still the same. The 20% is being paid by the city, 80% by the fund, but since they're paying the 80%, they put it out to bid. We said the project was let, to be let by MDOT, that's what it means. They put it out to bid, they select the contractor, and they pay the 80%. That's what we approved. It's always been the case. It just got delayed because of the site, that's all, we moved it further.
This is the first time I've heard MDOT being involved at all, and I've been.
Mr. Jenny.
Who's the director?
Mr. Jenny.
Yes.
Mr. Jenny, the good news is, I got a great relationship with MDOT.
Okay.
I mean, when I tell you I have a phenomenal relationship with them, I can send a message right out to the director of MDOT in Lansing, and I'll, I'll get you information. Give me until after Labor Day weekend, and I'll tell you exactly what's happening with it, and I'll speak to MDOT myself.
Okay, my question still stands.
I don't know.
I've never heard, I'd never heard MDOT being a part of this at all. It was always the city council, and if I recall correctly, we're talking years ago, the city council was putting money aside for this particular project. MDOT was never mentioned. This is the first time I'm hearing about MDOT being mentioned. Second part of this, like I said, money was set aside and approved by the city council at one point, and now we're talking, this is September of 2025, and this is crap.
I don't think we approved the money, we approved the project.
So, and this lady, bringing up this lady, if I may, when, since I don't direct him, I'm directing the question to you guys, when did that lady, when was that, that that happened? Wasn't it a year ago?
A little less than a year.
Okay, nine months, it doesn't matter. Point, the point is, it's been dormant. Nobody's doing anything about it. Our kids are still at risk. If this guy doesn't take consideration to kids, and he's been sitting on it, then what's his, what's his job? What's his purpose? Our kids are most important, and nothing's gotten done over the last 15 years.
Thank you, Mr. Jenny.
Mr. Jenny, let's, let's talk. I just sent a message real quick, just telling Adam from MDOT that I'd like to speak with him, him and Brad.
Hi.
Welcome. How you doing, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Janet.
Just take your name, the city resident.
Okay, Janet Duncan, address? Cornell.
Just, okay.
Thank, thank you for a chance to speak. I'm going to kind of follow up with this lady in the back at the pink outfit, I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
Angela Venaigis.
We're having the same issues on Cornell Street. We have neighbors that, the ordinance officers have been informed, they go to the house, they talk with them, we've seen them give citations. I feel like your ordinance people and your police officers are doing a heck of a job, but maybe your fines aren't high enough. Maybe these people aren't getting hit hard enough in the pocket, because they keep doing the same thing. Somebody needs to revisit all this and double these fines. I, I don't like to see anybody pay a lot of money, but I'm tired of looking at five-foot weeds, not being able to look in my backyard and see other people's backyards tore up, weeds, mud, dirt. You know, we've had to put up another privacy fence on the other side of our yard, because our neighbor's yard was atrocious. It just, and it puts you in a bad mood. We have a nice deck, we'd like to sit out there, but we sit out there and get mad, because we've called, we know the ordinance guy's been there, and they're not doing a thing about it. You know, these people are working their butts off, and these residents don't care. They don't care at all. And we don't have a home, better home than garden home, but we do mow the grass, trim it, we do take the weeds down. We all live by Home Depot, you know, really, what does it take? You know, so I'm just asking you to revisit your, your fines, look over your thing, and work, when the ordinance person pulls up, let them be a little scared. When the cop pulls up, because the guy's parked in his front yard for three weeks, he'll think, oh man, I got it again, and this time it's 200 bucks. Something, something's got to change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you do me a favor? There's a form up there, can you fill it out?
Mm-hmm.
Fill that form out, just give a brief description, and you can hand it over to our council secretary.
All right.
And what I'd like is, Director Laffeville is on here?
He's on vacation.
Or he, I think he's gone for, from out till September 3rd. You know, granted, being the holidays, so they might be off, and then are actually are the best, you know, one of, one of the best employees at City Hall is also.
Yeah, you got a great month.
He's been put on administrative leave, and.
They're working hard.
I don't know the details on that, but unfortunate. But what I can tell you is, get that over, we'll have George put us in an email, and then we'll start taking a look at it. You also have to put in the email that you grant permission for an ordinance officer to come into your backyard to be able to see the neighbors' backyards.
Oh, yeah, he's.
Because we're not allowed to be able to.
Yes.
Enter into your backyard. But before you step away, Councilman Saab had something also that he'd like to say to you.
So we, we did, we've asked the administration to, and the legal department, to revisit the fees, because when you do hit them in your pocket.
Mm-hmm.
The other problem is, is that once this ticket, this resident gets to court, the city attorney and the prosecutors need to give them a compliance fee, or let them go right out the door, that's the problem. Because I personally, and Angela and everybody would tell you, I go to, go to residents' homes and see their neighbors, it's absolutely disgusting.
Yeah, it is.
It's a shame.
I know, our taxes keep going up, which I understand why, but, you know, you look around at everybody else, and you're like, well, how come my taxes keep going up when my area, the place where I live, looks terrible?
Hopefully soon, the ordinances are going to change.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
I began the similar complaints, ma'am, and I think the city what's been doing, they give them a timeframe to take care of the property. If not, they'll send somebody to cut the grass and tag that bill on their taxes.
Or maybe even shorten up the timeframe.
Yeah.
Correct, 24 hours.
Think they give them about eight days right now.
Or what you do is you send out a notice to the entire city that you've all been put on notice.
That'd be great.
And now you can give a 24-hour notice after that.
Anything will help.
Yep, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Zohair Abdalhaat.
May I use for an additional minute?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just to, you know, to follow on what they said, in Dearborn, they give you a notice one week. If you don't cut your grass, they send the company who cuts the grass inside the city. Then they send you $375 to $500 bill to pay it, because they cut the grass plus administration fee. The city makes money actually on that.
They make so much money.
And if it doesn't get paid, it goes on the tax roll on your property, and that's what we should follow, so people, when they see 300 or 400 dollars cut, they will make sure it is cut and never happen again. The second thing I noticed in one of the issue on the agenda, there is a contract which is recommended to be extended until 2029. I would recommend highly to this body that you do not agree to any contract whatsoever which exceeds January 1st, 2026. We have a new administration coming, and they should have the courtesy to decide the next four years, what's going to happen in our city, who's going to get the contract, and why it is extended until 2029. It came to my attention that our absent mayor have given contracts to people, especially at the police department illegally, without approval of the city council, and which exposed the city to millions of dollars in lawsuits, which I don't know the exact number yet, it will come out. So I be very careful with anything this mayor suggests, any contract which exceed January 1st, 2026.
Thank you.
I hope you be very careful with what you approve. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? The honorable, lovely Rose Treppi, ladies and gentlemen, round of applause. Come on, we can do better than that. Let's give Rose a round of applause here.
Hey, Rose.
Be careful, be careful.
You know, Rose, Rose is forgivable, she's everybody's favorite, she's like everybody's godmother.
Grandmother?
Yeah.
No.
Aunt mother godmother.
I'm his grandmother.
Aunt mother.
Rose Treppi, Tulane Street. I'm not sure if anybody's aware, I only have two of the seniors here, well, three, but two that know the issue. Eaton Center has a gentleman that comes in, disrupts the whole place, beats on the piano, he was escorted out and banned, and all of a sudden he came back two weeks ago, and said he was allowed to come back from his attorney. I don't know if Roger knows anything about it.
No.
But his attorney shouldn't be able to tell him what he can do at our center. He now has been banned from the Richard Young Center for washing himself in the washroom with little kids there, nude. So he can't go there. How do we find out, and what can we do to keep him out of Eaton?
So, so this is a great question, pause your time real quick. You know, clearly sounds like there's probably a mental illness here happening.
He lives right across the street from the building.
Yeah, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and also like, knowing that you guys know that there's something going on here, I think it's the proper communication, you know, reach out to the authorities automatically, I would call 911, especially if anybody feels in danger or any type of threat. But I think, you know, the administration, look, the mayor's just got to be here to hear these things, and then he should be having, coordinating with the coordinator, having these conversations, I mean.
But his attorney has the authority to tell him, yeah, he can come in?
Who?
Martin's on.
Yeah, or if Martin is on, we could talk to the director of our Parks and Recreation.
I thought he'd be here.
Council Chair.
Please set the record that Councilman Coniston, the honorable Councilman Coniston is present here with us.
But. That gentleman doesn't have an attorney. He wears, has a beard, lives across from Eaton.
He lives across from Eaton, but I don't think he has a beard. Does he have a beard? Yeah.
Does he have a beard?
But he's just crazy. He doesn't have an attorney.
Well, he says his name is Smith. His name is not Smith, because he just signs it on the book, that's not his true name.
Okay, can we hear from Martin? Was he made aware of this?
I believe he is. I thought he'd be here tonight.
Older, older gentleman, about 5'9", 5'10".
I don't know, let's, can you unmute?
Director, are you able, there he is, he's on mute.
Very, very well, very aware of this individual, I can tell you that for sure. In fact, sitting on my desk, give the file that I've had to start with him, because there are numerous complaints. We've already gone over this with our corporate council, and we've set up a code of conduct that we posted in the building, so we have a little bit more leverage on him, and we're following a whole process of collecting all this data to, in fact, I get almost daily to try to.
Nothing from the audience, please, if you want to speak, please speak outside. Yes.
To try to take care of this problem, it's been quite a handful.
Martin, were you able, Director, were you able to, have you reached out to the police department on this incident yet?
No, no, we haven't.
Yeah, let's, let's get, let's get the authorities involved, I think this is not something we need to tread lightly on. I think the first thing that should have been done was reached out to the police department, especially if, what I'm hearing is, you know, he was nude in, at the Richard A. Young Center, like, I'd like you to reach out to the police chief, I'd like this to be reported, and there definitely needs to be a reference number here, and this needs to be reported. We should not be collecting data, we should be reaching out to the authorities and letting them know what's happening here.
Council Chair.
Hang on one second, Councilman, I heard you, I got you a second. Is, can we stay on top of that, Martin?
Yes.
Do you have the gentleman's information?
Yes, I have all of his information.
Please reach out to the police department, even today, a quick email on this incident, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman. I think this gentleman has been calling me, and I know what you're saying. He lived across the street from Eaton.
He lives right across the street.
And didn't he have a spouse or a girlfriend, I? I got a call from him the other day, I won't go into detail. He now lives in.
He now lives in Taylor, so he's no longer a resident of Dearborn Heights, according to him. We still see him come. He takes stuff out of the center. He'll steal books and takes them across the street. I was sitting in the bus the other day. He lied. And he took the books into his house. Yeah, because he's, yeah. Yeah, but the thing is, is that some of the seniors are getting to be afraid. No, I don't blame him because I. I can't hear you. Was that way just talking to him. Well, he came in today again. I was that way just talking on the phone to him. I was kind of getting. I haven't been around the last couple months, so maybe I need to go back in there because I did scare him away last time. I don't know. But I hate to see them being afraid. No, I get it. Because I understand in his tone and how aggressive he gets on the phone. It scares you. Okay. Then I just guess I need to go back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Are you speaking as a resident?
I'm, first of all, speaking as a councilman.
Okay.
Tom Wensel, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Counselor Chair, I'm sure you agree with me that every resident's vote in the upcoming election in November is an important vote and sacred to them. And every vote should count. We've heard that before. Every vote should count. And it would be unfair if someone made a vote for a candidate and that candidate decided not to accept the seat. That being said, because I can't get my name off the ballot, according to the clerk, we talked about that, I am not running for reelection to Dearborn Heights City Council. And I do not want the residents to waste their vote. Your vote is the only way, one of the only ways that you have a voice in this city, your vote. That's something that no one can take away from you. You can't negotiate it. You can't argue about it. Your vote is your vote. So do not waste your vote and vote for me in November election. I've been on city council for eight years, two terms, been involved with the city for 25 years. In the last eight years, I've been fighting for change and not much has happened, as you can tell, everybody's saying, you know, coming up here, hey, it's been 10 years, the same thing's happening over and over. I've got so much energy to exert in a day and I spend, if I have five gallons of energy and I'm wasting a gallon of that spinning my wheels, not getting anything accomplished on city council, I love being on here and I appreciate everyone that's supported me in the past. And I'd like to take that gallon and put to good use. I'm not leaving. You probably see more of me. I'll be up here on this podium a lot, beginning of the meetings and after the meetings. But please tell your friends, your neighbors, come November election, do not vote for Tom Wensel, that's me, do not vote for Tom Wensel for city council. There's other candidates that are more worthy of this position. And I might be back, I don't know, but I, right now, my family needs me more and other things I'm involved with the community need me more and I can be more productive in that part of the community. Now I'd like to speak as Dearborn Heights resident, Tom Wensel, Tulane Street. This Saturday, August 30th, the nonprofit Jamie's Kids, which I'm president of, is hosting Second Annual Family Fun Day. It's a day full of activities, which include free barbecue, picnic, balloon and magician clown, bounce houses, music by Divinity 3X, face paint, rock paint, raffle prizes, cakewalk, free drinks, make your own ice cream sundae, golf clinic, soccer clinic, lacrosse clinic, hourly limbo contest, and more. And it's 100% completely free. We had originally offered it to the seniors for everything free, but because of the response I've had through people that want to help out, we are able to offer this whole event, food, everything, 100% completely free to the public. It's being held at Swapka Park, 5499 McKinley Street in Dearborn Heights. Hope to see everyone there Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thank you. And don't forget, don't vote for Tom Wensel.
Well, I will say, Councilman, you have served the city for 25 years. I'm not gonna say as a councilman. I'm saying you have served the residents of Dearborn Heights from the planning commission to the zoning board, to Jamie's Kids, to the councilmen, to all the great stuff that you've done. And if you're, if, you know, to see you and Councilman Constant wanting to take a step back and saying, time for others to lead, you have led great things in too many years and I think you have a lot of respect. So either way, Councilman, I respect your decisions and all your future endeavors and somebody that has served for Dearborn Heights, we're not gonna, not appreciate that, you know. I can talk about when the former police chief was walked out, didn't have his proper retirement. That bothers me. Regardless of how you feel about Mark Myers, Mark Myers served the city for 30 years. And, you know, regardless of how people feel or how you feel, I think there should still be some type of old man retirement for you and Mark. I don't know. But.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. Yeah. So I wish you all the best in all the future endeavors in choosing, putting family before. Everybody is actually the right decision. And if you feel like you need to put your family first, I respect you because, you know, that's the conversation me and my wife have at home all the time. The second that this is gonna interfere with my family and my children, I'll hang it up because my family comes first. Counselor Chair. Thank you, Counselor Chair.
I would like to also echo whatever you just said for Councilman Wensel. I would like to thank you for all the years of service, Councilman.
Thank you.
We learned so much from you and I salute you for all the time you put in. And, I mean, I hate to see you go to not to be with us, but hopefully I'm here again. But, you know, I do respect what you just said, family comes first, and God bless you and God bless your family.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Counselor Chair. Councilman, what, you said you wanted to say something?
I'm good. I'll be saying more. I've got four more months.
No, no, you said Counselor Chair and I went to Councilman Ahmad first.
Oh, no, no, I said, thank you, Counselor Chair. Thank you.
Oh, I thought you were saying Counselor Chair, like you want to speak.
Well, if you want me to, I'll talk some more.
Please, please. Make these four months easy, please, Councilman. All right, anyone else in the audience?
Counselor Chair, we do have one.
We have one from Margaret. I'm assuming it's Margaret King.
There you go.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I was just wanting to know if we have an update of the project that was supposed to be started before the kids went back to school. I know Crosswood's back in school, DeWorme's back in school. Just wanting to know about the school zone safety project. And also too, Mr. Jamie was speaking about the money that you put aside, Mo, if I am right, Mr. Jamie.
Are you talking?
Do we have an update?
About the Joey Smith initiative? I think that was the money he was referring to.
I think so too.
And the administration did not.
No, he's shaking his head, no.
No, no.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Jamie. But do we have an update regarding the school zone safety, when that project is supposed to be starting?
During announcements, I will ask that question to Mr. Deep. How does that sound?
You're awesome, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I do want to just recognize, maybe Madam Clerk can do it, I know I usually don't do this, but. An amazing individual that works on our elections every year, is at Kenfield, one of the busiest and. She does a phenomenal job. Maybe our clerk can recognize you because she hears you here in the audience today.
Susan Regal. She's our chair for Precinct 10.
Yes.
Because we're just, we're just on the number, so used to do 12. So she's a, yeah, she is a phenomenal chair.
And.
And welcome to our city council meeting.
And I don't know how long she's been doing it for, but I can say that the first time that I ever voted, I ran into her and I don't want to, you know, put it out there, but she's been doing a phenomenal job and thank you for everything that you do. Very well. Vince, Vince, you got something to say? Oh, here we go. I thought we were about to walk away, but here comes Vince. Is that your hair, Vince?
Prepare to get lit up. What's that?
You got your hair?
No.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. Light up, we got some good laughs today.
Okay, it's just lack of air, that's all. On the agenda here, shoot, I lost it. The contract for the parking lot, can we get that approved so we can get the ball rolling on this place? I mean, it would be nice for the city to start making some revenue and for Mr., to get some revenue rolling in here. I mean, come on now, let's get this thing patched up, please, something get going. You know, we missed out, we missed out on I don't know how many thousands of dollars this past weekend when we had Heinz Cruise. When the golf course packs right up to Heinz Drive, that could have been a major anti-car show right then and there. How much money could the city have generated?
I'm saying why so many nice cars.
You know, it's amazing how many nice cars went through Heinz. And how many miles of Heinz Road is in Dearborn Heights? The majority of it.
Thank you.
It's 17 miles long. So come on, let's get this ball rolling. Let's not drag our asses anymore.
All right, that's, that's.
All right.
I don't want to get yelled at for your First Amendment right, but let's not swear. You have the right to though.
Okay.
I don't want Rachel sending me a message or getting Sue sending me an email.
You know what Rachel can do, you know.
Thanks, Vince.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the audience? Anyone else from Zoom? Moving on. Next up, fund transfers and current claims.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claim in ACH and wire transfer six through one, six dash one through six dash 16 and six dash 18 through six dash 43, S.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that? Counselor Chair. Can I ask?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, you want to go ahead? I was just gonna ask if I can have somebody give me a breakdown on what the United States Geological Survey is on and what it was and it's at $16,000. I'd love to hear from this. Did this go out for bid? It did not go out for bid? Why didn't it go out for bid? Did we accept this contractor? What's going on here? Why are we spending $16,000?
Counselor Chair, US, I know what it is. I know what it is. He's showing it to me. The USGS is United States Geological Survey. It's a government agency that places monitors on flood areas. So in Dearborn Heights, we have two monitors, one on Beach, Inkster and Joy, Inkster and Inkster, I'm sorry, Inkster and Ecorse Creek and one on the north end on Rouge River. So basically what you do, these are the monitors that track flood level. We use them quite a bit. And this is an annual contract with the government that we've entered to the last 14 years that I know of. So we pay for these monitors and anyone in our city, including ourselves, can go at any time 24/7 and watch instant water level issues with the flood. So it is just a service. It's a government agency. You don't go out to bid. Nobody else provides that service but them, so.
So is this the only person that does the survey is the United States?
Yeah, it's a government agency. They have their own website.
When I do my backup research, I'm like, hey, I don't see this. This is foreign to me, so I had to ask that question.
It is, and we've done, we've entered into it many, you know, repeatedly.
Yeah, March 25th, 2025 was the last time we entered the agreement, motion 25154. And we annually renew this contract. It helps with the flooding tracking.
Counselor Chair, why is?
Excuse me, sir?
What's that? Councilman Wensel?
Director, do we maintain that facility or is it maintained?
No, so if you go out on the river, actually, I stop every now and then. What you'll see, it's a solar collector, a scanner, like a laser. We don't do any maintenance. It's all included in the 16,000. And if you have any issues like false reading, sometimes a log gets under it and then it reads false. So when you look at the draft, it shows false numbers, like we haven't had rain in a while and now all of a sudden I'm seeing, they go out and take care of it. So we do no maintenance, no.
So this is, this is a machine, so to speak, that monitors the level of the creek, of water, the body of water.
So, and it also tracks, so the graph will give you, so if you go on the website and then select Dearborn Heights site, it'll show you where. And then you hit on that thing and it will show you instantly and then last month, last year. And then if there's any bad weather anticipated, like four inches of rain, it will show, the draft, you know, the graph will show instant. So if you wanted to be aware, to send notices to the public or do something, when it hits, I know on the Ecorse Creek, I tried to track it, anything less than eight, but sometimes we hit more, you know, we hit 11 before, so.
Thank you, thank you.
But we don't maintain it, no.
Yeah, we've had it for a few years.
Mr. Deep, a question for you. I'll ask you in a second. You can just stay up there. Okay. Any other questions?
Counselor Chair, Chris LaPointe posts things, you know, quite frequently on Facebook 411. And I just noticed that today I read over his comments, he said that there were several things on the claims that would exceed the ledger on some of the items that, are you familiar with any of those? Exhaust or go past the amount that's budgeted?
Those would be from last year and they're not part of these claims. These claims are for the new fiscal year, so these ones won't have any over-budget items. But the majority of these items, they're not going to be over-budget. And if they are over-budget, it's probably, basically, they're miscoded on the invoice numbers, which we would catch when we enter them into the BSNA system.
So you're saying every claim, as far as you know, will not exhaust that budgeted amount?
As far as I know, these claims, none of these will exhaust the budget.
Not the budget, but.
The budget line item, the GL number, to my knowledge.
Councilman, do you have a list of them?
I did, you know, I just read it quickly before the meeting and I was hoping, you know, at the last meeting, I was saying that we should maybe hire this guy to do research for us, to go over the stuff, because he's pretty thorough and, you know, every time I checked, fact-checked, it's pretty accurate too.
Yeah.
He does. You know, I mean, if he's on here, if he's on Zoom.
Is he on there, Chris LaPointe? No, but this also isn't, this isn't public comments, Councilman.
I know, I don't know.
So if you can pull it up, you can.
So if you can pull it up, you can speak.
I, yeah, I, no, it's, it's, we gotta, we gotta move on, so I'll just.
Thank you.
I'll try to be a little bit more thorough next time.
Understood, claims you seen. Any other discussions?
We know, it's your memory.
You have anything else?
It's not public comment.
Any other discussion?
We already passed the public comments.
I'm, I'm sorry, public comments are, are done at this point. You can speak again towards the end. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Yes. Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Kenson?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
No.
Hassan Zap?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Mo Baydun?
Yes.
Motion carry, six, one.
Thank you. Next up, we have considerations of bid. Intrum Comptroller Baydun bid award Warren Valley Parking Lot resurfacing.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the Warren Valley Parking Lot resurfacing, um, for Asphalt Specialists LLC or somebody else that the council would recommend for a total cost not to exceed their respective bid and return the bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account one oh one dash seven five three dash nine three two zero zero zero, which will be accompanied by an amendment coming from the general funds, uh, balance equal to costs incurred by the city as outlined in seven dash eight.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council Chair. Mr. Baydun, I want to thank you for the tally sheet. It's very professional, easy to read and go through it, so I do appreciate your effort on this. Uh, but I wanted to see, uh, I know you mentioned the school portion in here. Did we have an approval for the school above payment?
Council Chair wanted to bring it, uh, to this council meeting with this type of spec. And then if you guys approve it, then we can bring it to the school board to see if they will, they'll approve it. Now, um, the motion does not say contingent on the school board's approval. Um, given that this is like a mid-grade, mid-tier solution for what we want, uh, we want to go back out to bid for something even cheaper than this. So it's either we have to pay the entire cost or the school agrees to pay the portion that was somewhat discussed in the meetings prior.
And my second question is, you have alternate one, two, and three. Is that something that we need to add to the?
Mr. Deep, can you speak up on this?
He can speak up on it, but alternate three is landscaping around, so it's just a grass area. And reality, that doesn't affect the parking lot. Alternate two is the curb drains in the driveway that allows for the water mitigation.
Yeah, so, so the base bid is the two inch as per your direction. So we scrapped, revised the drawings, two inch throughout. The, uh, the alternate one, the driveway itself, if you look at the driveway itself, we put an alternate because two inches are not going to withstand the delivery trucks and the heavy use, the driveway use.
You're talking, I'm sorry, the driveway is traveled away from the street all the way to the building?
To the building, the driveway itself, we put an alternate to make it four inches. So the driveway itself, because the, the potholes currently are heavier than, they're bigger than two inches. So your, 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 the driveway is the most concentrated load-bearing member. So we put an alternate for the driveway. And then alternate two was basically the, if you look at the, all the islands in the drive, you've got missing cur- uh, uh, curbs. They're missing curbs. They're broken, gone, been there for a long time. So we put an alternate to repair the broken curbs. So then the final product will be, you know, consistent. And then the alternate three is what he was talking about, the repairs, the landscaping, there was constantly damage. Now, uh, it is designed so you can award à la carte, base, base plus one, base plus two. So depending on the cost, that's the way that the bids are designed. So up to you.
So I have a question. If you go extra two inches on the driveway, is that going to affect the rest of the parking lot, like waterways?
You're milling, sir, so we maintain this.
What's that?
You mill first, you mill.
Okay.
So you will mill it and then replace it. So basically the, the elevations, the final elevation will be the same, absolutely.
I mean, I know the way I look at it, I think it needs to have the three alternate to have a good job, at least.
The alternate, yes. You can get away with alternate one and two. You can possibly get away with.
Well, yeah. So we're trying to come up with a product, at least, um, uh, the heavy sections, the driveway is to withstand, because I, I understand all the delivery is going to take place. The school buses are going to go there, delivery trucks are going to go there.
School buses are not going to go there.
I've, I have pictures for those buses, if you'd like to see them.
No, school buses are not going to go there.
Okay, all right, okay.
Here's, here's the Vice President of the school, of the school board right here.
I, I watched, I took pictures, my own thing.
They do exist. They've been going there, but no. Uh, Mr. Deep, for the alternate three for the grass, you think we can go with a, if, I know this, this beds are from the asphalt companies, correct?
Absolutely, all of them, so.
Yeah, I know what I'm saying, from the same company to change the, to replace, restore the grass around.
Yes, sir, yes.
You think we can get maybe for alternate three, go to a different company? Maybe we can guess, you know?
Sure.
Keep her bed?
Sure. Yep, and you can do, what you can do is probably not do that this year. Wait till all the construction are done and come back in the spring and say some, um, you know, rain repairs or, um, um, you know, repair the damage. But yeah, you can, you can do without it, absolutely.
And if, because also if contractors damage any of the, of the current grass, they can be the ones to be held responsible for them. We shouldn't be held responsible.
Any other discussions?
Council Chair.
Councilman?
Thank you. Um, a couple of things, uh, one of the residents got a spoke and kind of indicated that parking lot was a reason why the, the facility isn't open yet, and that's, that's, that's completely false. Um, uh, Mr. Deep, you're going to mill, you're going to mill this now? It's going to be milled?
Two inches, yes.
Two inches down? Have you done any tests? Maybe there's only two inches of asphalt there.
We cored it, we cored it.
The whole area?
I cored the whole thing. So before we even designed the four-inch repair, I sent, we cored it. So we have a core of all the existing, so we know what's out there. We know that's how we, we have to go. And we also, um, uh, put a, a pay item to, uh, patch, so we don't just put an overlay. We mill, we patch the stuff, because like I said, some of those potholes are thicker than the two or the four inches. We have some big potholes. So you don't just put an overlay. You fix them, you level them, and then you, um, um, maintain it. And one critical thing you need to keep in mind, that this place is probably the only place I know in Dearborn Heights that doesn't flood in heavy rain. It is, it drains beautifully. It's, it's actually a great drainage system.
I'll stop you right there.
I like to keep it.
Drainage right into the golf course. Can I, can I stop you right there?
Yes, sir.
There's a video circulating where everything was dri- was, everything was flooded. The whole entire parking lot was flooded and, and it's from this past weekend. This past rain, the whole parking lot was flooded.
Okay, so, so.
I haven't, I'll show you. I actually, I'm going to send it to you. I'm going to send it to you.
All right.
I didn't know what I was looking at, but somebody sent it to me and they said, Mr. Deep said that this parking lot doesn't flood.
Doesn't?
It's all flooded, it's all underwater.
This weekend?
Yes.
The short rain?
Yeah, very small rain, very little, all underwater.
I understand, all right.
I got a video.
We got videos.
It floods, Mr. Deep.
So, so we, we do have drainage system, we're just going to restore the pavement at this point, so, um, it's, that's what this project's for.
By the way, it's, it's always flooded. Always flooded.
Council Chair.
Yeah.
I'd like to continue, um, you know, I, I was over there the other day and I drove like the entire parking lot. And there's some areas that haven't been parked on in ten years, you know. They're, they're not bad, there's a lot of weeds going through this that have not been maintained. And, uh, I was driving through there and there's some pretty rough spots, maybe, you know, areas that could be cut out and replaced, you know, ten by twenty feet or something. Uh, that being said, I've been driving down the streets of Dearborn Heights and I've drove over worse roads than this golf course parking lot. And this is a private business, even though the city is liable to maintain it, that means just patch it up as, as necessary, not redo it, maintain it. Uh, we have residents that pay taxes that'll never golf at that golf course or go to that banquet center that have issues in front of their homes, cracked streets. On Parker Street in Dearborn Heights, two years ago, the city went through, uh, either through themselves or the homeowner paying to have trees removed between the sidewalk and the street, almost twenty trees in a three-block area. And those stumps are still sitting there rotting away. The reason is, we don't have the money to dig out them stumps. But we're asking for at least bare minimum half a million dollars. And I know how this goes. I've been at city council a long time. It's five hundred thousand now, but then four months, you know what? Ran into a little problem, you know, we're going to have to do a change order for two hundred thousand. And oop, you ran into another problem. And before you know it, you know, it's a million dollars or maybe more. I'm all about getting this business opened up because it's been a long time. And we haven't gotten any money from the banquet hall, but we have from the golf course, which is a, which is a plus. Um, I don't want to spend a penny on this parking lot. I mean, I drove through it in my wife's car and it wasn't like blah, 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 blah. It was boom, 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 you know? It was, it was drivable. I mean, we can't, we can't afford as a city to have a state-of-the-art, beautiful parking lot. You go out, this parking lot in City Hall is not the best parking lot. You walk up the sidewalk and the sidewalk has to be ground down because they're so uneven, people are tripping on it. But we're going to invest, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousand dollars for a private business that most, every taxpayer in the city of Dearborn Heights will never visit. And, uh, one thing I noticed when I went by there, the sign is taken down. It's still there, but all the signage is moved, painted white, the signs out, the circles out. And I want to know what's, what's, what's the situation with the sign?
Well, Council, we're discussing the pavement. We can talk about the signs after.
Okay.
This is a.
Council Chair.
Going before the sign?
That's, that's, yeah, that's not part of this. We're, we're, this project is just for the pavement. And, and, and to say that we're not replacing the pavement, we're doing a mill two inch. So it's, it's an overlay per the council directions, so.
By the way, I also want to just respond. Councilman, you said at the last meeting that when you read the contract, because you read the contract, we have to maintain, uh, you have to maintain the parking lot.
Right.
Milling it two inches is maintaining the parking lot. It is not ripping the parking lot and fixing the parking lot. Unfortunately, I agree with you. Unfortunately, I agree with you. We were, we were put in, in a terrible decision on, on this, on this, uh, uh, contract. A contract that you didn't negotiate, I didn't negotiate, that ultimately the administration negotiated, right? You can't get mad at, you can't get mad at the tenant. Hang on one second, please, sir. Just for the record. Can't get mad at the, you can't get mad at the Isa brothers. At, at the end of the day, the Isa brothers are going to do what's in their best interest. The city failed at doing what was best in their best interest. Um, but unfortunately, this is where we are standing today. And while it's a hard pill to swallow, including for me, this sucks, you know? Because if, if there's something that I'd like to put five hundred thousand dollars to, figure out our tree issues, figure out the sycamore trees in the city, that's what I'd like to see the money go to. But we have a legal obligation, because where you say things like, well, it's going to start at five hundred, that's going to go to two hundred thousand, an extra hundred thousand, you're right. Because we've seen that happen, an extra ten percent, an extra ten percent. The reality is this, though, we go to court, right? We're not open, we're losing money. Say the contract says, hey, I don't want to start paying anything because the city's running me through, they're not following on their contracts. We go to the, through court, the court comes back and says you have to pay it. And then they come back and say, well, I lost damages because I wasn't open. So now I want to sue the city. We're still paying for it and we're losing more money.
Council Chair.
Well, you know. I'm going to go to Councilman Sob next.
I'm not done, yeah, I was still, you know.
Well, no, you were talking about something and I asked to speak. You let me speak, so I'm going to go to Councilman Sob and then I'll go back to you. Councilman Sob.
Council Chair. Again, I hate to bring up Debbie Dobner Downer here, but seems like it's over and over, we're targeting businesses. And it's from a single council individual, over and over and over. Problem is, the individual spent over eight million dollars into this property that you're now calling a private business. It's a city-owned facility. Whether you agree with it or not, just to put on the record, Mr. Isa, Mr. Isa next month has wedding bookings there. And if we don't do the parking lot based to his contract when he opens up, he's going to sue the city for damages and losses to the venues he has there. That's number one. Number two, it's kind of amazing how we just flipped the story backwards, that while I drive there and the parking lots, that parking lot is horrible. That parking lot is absolutely horrible. Horrible. And the thing is that it's in the contract. It's in the contract. And you got to fulfill the contracts. If Mr. Isa goes out for bid and does it on his own, whatever he decides to do and pay, it's going to cost us probably double. So the city has an obligation to fix the parking lot. And as for saying probably no Dearborn Heights resident will visit the golf course, that's an absolute false statement. That parking lot on the weekends absolutely full and during the day. Maybe if you don't golf and don't come to the north end, it's a different story. But it's full of Dearborn Heights residents. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman, did you still add something?
Well, I, there was, there was a study done before the golf course changed, uh, concessionaire or tenant changed hands. And it, it was, uh, less than ten percent of the residents of Dearborn Heights used the golf course.
Sixty percent now.
What'd you say, Council?
Sixty percent now, sixty percent residents.
I can tell you I golfed there. Sixty percent?
Yes.
No way. Six out of ten people?
I've talked to Jason.
Guys, guys. No, no, anyway.
He's lost in his word.
So anyway, I mean, I, I didn't say, I, I didn't say that the, the building was a private, it, I didn't say it wasn't owned by the city. I said that the business there, the business run out of our building is a private business.
Yeah, but that was like that with the old concessionaire as well.
No, no.
Yeah, it was, but yeah, Eric was a private owner.
That was our, our business.
No, it wasn't.
Oh.
Yeah. No.
Yeah, he was, he was a concessionaire.
He was still a leasing.
He was a concessionaire.
He was a concessionaire.
No, he was a concessionaire, it's different than a leasing.
You're right, this is the contract that we're in.
I know, but I'm saying, my thing is, is I'm all about, you know, getting the parking lot in, in working order, flatten it out, patch the holes that you need to be patched. Let, let's do the, the bare minimum it takes to get this in good condition, like we treat our residents, giving them the bare minimum to fix their roads and the bare minimum to cut down their trees and the bare minimum for every public service, the bare minimum for street sweeping, the bare minimum for everything, the bare minimum we can do to provide police protection. And, but we're going to give one entity the ultimate, you know, resurface the whole thing? I mean, I have nothing against Isa, bro. Nothing at all. All, all I, I, I am, I'm, I'm waiting for this place to open. You know, because of the contract, I mean, but maintain and repair by Webster's dictionary are two different meanings. Maintain means keep it open, keep it operable. Repair means to repair it. And in the contract, it says maintain. So you fix the potholes as good as you can, flatten them out, get your little steamrollers out there, flatten it out, and maybe present something to city council with a four-inch overlay of the driveway, brand new. I mean, but, but for, you know, potentially a million dollars? I mean, we've already, we've already.
It's not a million dollars.
We've already put over four.
Point of order, one meaning.
That facility, we, you know, with the golf course and everything, we put in there four million dollars into it. It was taxpayers' money. And when that contract was brought before city council, the administration said, I'm putting this out for bids and it will not cost the city one penny, his exact words. And it ended up costing us.
Who's the exact words were those?
Bill Bassey's.
Yeah. So who's Bill Bassey today?
I know, when he, when he brought the contract, he says, this, this is a RFP. It's all this stuff's got to be done to want zero pennies being paid by the city. The concessionaire or the leasing will pay for everything. That's what he said to us. And that's, we were, we were misled. And when it came time to vote, it was a six to one vote. I voted no, because it wasn't a good contract.
It was actually, uh, it was actually wasn't, it was four to one. You weren't here, no, I wasn't. Councilman, Councilman Ahmad wasn't even here. He was out of, out of the country.
No, I mean, the vote at that time.
He wasn't here. He, Councilman Ahmad, that it was, was out of the country.
Five to one?
Yeah. And no, I mean, I believe there was.
It was me. One no vote.
Okay. Well, guys, we, we have a motion on the table here.
You know, we can't spend this much money. I mean, we've got so many problems. We had a special meeting before this where we were negotiating something that's very critical of the city and we couldn't come up with the money. And this is.
Be able to give me back my money and take this contract and give me that.
No, I, yeah, I think you're doing a great job, Wes.
Give me my money, take this contract, I don't want this contract.
I know, hey, hey, nothing from the audience.
No, I mean, I want this place open.
Houseman, Houseman, enough, hang on one second, let me get a control of order of the meeting. Hang on for a second, please, one second.
Just one second, Council Chair.
Sir, please, I'm asking you, point of order for a second, I'm going to give it back to you. Please, point of order. Please, point of order, sir. Please, please. Hey, guys, we're not doing this. Please, one second. I'm gonna let you speak. Can you just give me a minute? Please, one second. Mr. Isa, nothing from the audience. Guys, nothing from the audience. Councilman, I'm gonna let you finish up, but you've said the same thing 10 times repetitively about how you feel about it. I'm gonna give you 30 seconds to wrap this up.
Yep, okay. That's one of the reasons I'm, I'm moving away from this because my, the logical opinions I have are just, on the wayside. I have nothing against Osama Isa.
Yeah, you do.
Personally, I have nothing against the man.
Nothing from the audience. Or nothing from the council.
I, I praise him for his businesses he has. This is not anything to do with me or him. This is money that the city is putting in. You know, I wish, I wish we had, if we, you know, if we had that money, I'd say, yeah, do it. But we don't have the money.
I agree with you. But guess what? You know what else we don't have? The money to go through litigation.
Why wouldn't we get some, if we, if we patch the parking lot within reasonable amounts, you know, spend a hundred thousand dollars and patch up, flatten it all out, you know, and maybe close, maybe close off.
I asked him, by the way, I told Ali Deep to go the cheapest route possible.
Patching, sir, you, 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 this thing is so beyond its useful life. You know, we've got projects, we try to limit the construction. The rest of it, when you take the machinery over it to patch it, it's deteriorating. It's beyond its useful life. I wanted to originally do four inches at 20-year fix, and that was expensive. So we came back and we went and at the direction of the council. Bare minimum, two inches. So base on the top, bare minimum. You can't go beyond that. It becomes a paint job and it's good for a week.
And Mr. Deep, I just, I want to add on, guys, like, why aren't we not talking about, holy cow, this place looks phenomenal. Whether you're there or not, hang on, whether you're there or not, the place has become a state of the art and is becoming a place that Dearborn Heights can finally say, we have a facility. That's a wow. Whether you like to believe it or not, Jason and the Isa brothers have done a phenomenal job at Warren Valley Golf Course. End of story. That's it. We, yeah, that's what, we own the Warren Valley Golf Course. When Dan Palaco bought it before you, you were on council and you guys approved to buy it, the first thing that was said was it was gonna be a money pit. When you talk to Warren Evans, the CEO that used to own it, you, Warren County said, I'm selling it because it's a money pit. The good news is, this is the final straw for us. It's always been a money pit from the day Dan Palaco bought that place. And you, and Bill Bassey, and Denise Malinowski Maxwell, and Ray Muscat, and Dave Abdullah, and the, and, and the eight, seven of you guys have voted on it. Knew you didn't want it to be built on anything. Now you're saying, I want to keep it to stay in the golf course, but we want to keep it to be in the golf course, but it can't have the right parking lot. Come on, guys, like, enough's enough. There's a vote on the table. Make the vote. You don't want to vote no, vote no. You want to vote yes, vote yes. Mr. Isa, great job. You don't like it? Don't move forward. You don't like it? If it passes, it passes. If it fails, it fails. That's it.
I mean, how many parking spaces are there in that parking lot?
I personally don't know.
400?
I don't know, a ton.
No, we didn't count, but in the 450s.
450, I mean, can't we do half of it?
What's the point? You have to do the other half regardless.
Not really. The, the west half of the parking lot is in good shape.
No, it's not.
Guys, point of order, point of order. Nothing from the audience. I have a video that I can send to you that the whole place is flooded.
I've never visited that park.
It's doing half, doing, doing half. So what we're gonna do, the half the city uses and, and, or the schools and move ours. I mean, it, it's, no, we didn't look at it that way. It's, it's, the entire pavement is beyond, way beyond its useful life. It's, it's really, when we took the course, we couldn't even keep them together. We corded, it wasn't even sticking together in the thing. It's, it's beyond its useful life.
I'm gonna go to Councilman Constant next, guys. I'm done with this conversation. We're taking it to a vote. Councilman Constant, go ahead.
We were all here. Originally, it was, it was gonna be developed. Residents came out, they didn't want it developed. We bought the golf course. Mr. Isa's and the city are fixing it up. It's a win-win for the parking lot because the parking lot is beyond its useful life. The, the people from the school are gonna be able to park there. Okay?
Yeah, man.
So it, it allevates the big problem with traffic and at the school. It's, it's a great investment.
Do we own the parking lot?
Yes. That's the only thing we have left.
We could charge for parking.
Yes. Was that what we want to do to other students at Crestwood?
No, I mean, you could rent it or something.
You know, and, and I hopefully by the end of this conversation, councilmen, or, or even councilwomen, or council members, you guys should go reach out to your superintendent, figure it out with Dr. Musalem. And say to Dr. Musalem, hey, we're getting the parking lot fixed. We're paying for this percentage. Will you pay this percentage? And maybe other than myself, one of the other council members could step up and do that because I'm no longer gonna be making that phone call to Dr. Musalem because I, I feel like it got us to nowhere. I got embarrassed in front of them. And, and I didn't do it because I had a care for Dr. Musalem or for the golf course. I did it because children, parents have called me, parents have said my, our, our lives are in danger when we line up on Warren Avenue. But instead, we looked around and we said, well, what was the city gonna get out of it? That's, to me, that's pure bull crap. It should have came down and said, absolutely, for the sake of our children and for the safety of our children, we all should have supported this, but we didn't.
Correct.
So now we left out $200,000 on the table. So now we're forced to be paying for it. Dr. Musalem is just gonna say, well, she can have the parents continue to do the same thing. And they're gonna save $200,000. Or the city only ends up paying, you know, 70% or 60% of this. And the school district pays the thing, which, thank you to the school for even wanting to do that. But the reality is, they came here, they had four meetings, they, they didn't feel receptive. It is what it is. There's a motion on the table. A Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. No company was chosen. Uh, Councilman Ahmad, or this council, we need to now choose a company here, take it to a vote.
Council Chair. Choose the alternates as well, like which alternates you want.
Yes. And, and we'll have that discussion because it's not about socks. Nobody wants to pay money. We don't, we don't have the money to pay it. We really don't. Right? Just like we don't have the money to move to BSNA to go into cloud. We didn't have the money. You had to make it up. You had to figure it out. You had to get creative. In this situation, you had to be creative. We're, I command Mr. Isa, good job on a great contract. I think the contract sucks for the city. Just like Councilman Wanso voted no, we had four votes, which he doesn't talk about. All he says is, I voted no. Guess what? I voted no three of the four. Dave Abdullah, Councilman, former Councilman Dave Abdullah voted three times as well. He voted no. Nobody talks about that because we said we didn't like this contract. But what he also, Councilman Wanso is not talking to us about, is that we had the experts come here and say, if you don't vote on this this year, we're gonna forever lose our greens. Then it's just not, it's, it's gonna be developed, it's gonna be built on, and it's gonna be things that no resident wanted. So yeah, I had to make, I was elected to make tough decisions. And one of that tough decisions, hang on, Councilman, one of those tough decisions was, the experts, I don't know, I'm not an expert in greens, I'm not an expert in golf. But the experts were telling us that our grass was frying and the only way you could preserve it was if you fixed it this year. If we, and mind you, I'm sure all the residents, in case you guys forgot, there was tall grass everywhere. Everybody was talking about the long grass, people riding their mopeds, it being abandoned. Imagine we waited till today. Sorry, the right decision wasn't no. It's a tough pill to swallow, but the right decision was not to vote no in the sense that we were gonna lose 274 acres of land to nothing. That's what was gonna end up happening. And you'd have no revenue sources today. And you wouldn't have, according to Councilwoman Breyer, 60% of your residents enjoying the golf course today in the amenities. Uh, or a potential fire station, which I'm also voted no again. But being able to use, you know, somewhere to be able to build on. Go ahead, Councilman Wanso.
We did lose all the greens.
No, you didn't.
All the greens were resided. Every green there was resided. We lost every green.
No, it would have been worse.
No, it's, they died and they had, everyone mattered, we waited two more years.
I don't know. I don't know if Jason is on here that he could talk about it. I'm, I'm not an expert on it.
We're not here for the greens.
We resided all the greens, so it wasn't a matter of.
It's just delaying time and put it to a vote.
Hey, guys, calm down. Point of order. Councilman Wanso speaking.
Point of order.
Guys.
He just keeps repeating himself over and over.
Point of order, Councilman. Come on, come on.
I mentioned something about the greens.
Point of order. Okay, Council Chair. Let's, Councilman Wanso finish.
You know, I'm fine. I'm voting no.
Okay.
All right, great. Council Chair. Uh, Mr. Deep, are you familiar with all these bidders? Are you?
So these, it was sent to the same 12 bidders that bid before. Six of them replied this time. And they're basically the same companies. Six out of the 12.
I know, I understand. Are you familiar with their work? Are you comfortable with them?
I work with most of them.
So if I, if I go with the lowest bid?
They are qualified.
Asphalt specialists.
They are qualified.
Are you comfortable with that bid?
I can work with them, yes.
Okay. So Council Chair, I would like to, uh, my motion to give it to Asphalt Specialists LLC with alternate one and two, without alternate three. That takes us to $539,601. If I'm not mistaken.
What does alternate one and two do again, guys?
Well, alternate one is for a thicker driveway.
Yep.
And alternate two is for new curbs, gutters, and drains in the driveway.
Fixing the curbs and gutters around the driveway.
I think this is something needs to, I mean, if we do the resurfacing without those two alternate, that doesn't make sense. I think it needs to be done.
I agree.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad with the chose of the company of Asphalt Specialists LLC. Uh, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Now that a company is chosen, any discussion?
Um, Council Chair. Would you have Mr. Isa, if he has any intake on this?
Sure. If you want to speak on it. Do you have any intake? You just want it done, right?
We need a.
They're all qualified. Uh, not all of them worked with the city before, but they're all qualified. And you have them, you know, you have all the bids in front of you, so we're just basically applying, qualified the low bidders. Uh, using those alternate, but yes, they can all do it, absolutely. It's a, it's an alternate.
We need to add options.
Right, yeah.
Hang on one second. Councilman Wanso, what were you saying?
I said, do we need an alternate? I just brought up that we.
Yeah, he chose alternate one or two.
Just the, just the options. Now, okay, okay. Just one and two.
So I'm going with that bid. Alternate one is a thicker driveway. They have to make a thicker driveway. And alternate two is for new curbs, gutters, and drains in the driveway.
So it's, yep.
Okay, so basically, alternate one is to add the two inches in the driveway, correct?
Alternate one is to add, to make it thicker and then fix the curves, their broken curves.
He's choosing one and two.
Correct, so, one and two. And I left, number, alternate three is for the grass and the soil around the area.
Landscaping and grass, we can do later by a separate company or maybe next year.
Correct. I, I mean, for the record, I think it's about 75,000 difference between this bidder and the second lowest.
Yeah. 75,000?
Yeah, around 75,000.
Any other discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes.
Just for clarification, so we're going off the tally sheet.
Council Wanso, can you have, hold your discussions for later?
So we have it cleared. The base, because this is different. On the bottom, it says cost allocation. So we're not going by any of this. We're just gonna go by base bid, 476, 948. Alternate one, 50,853, 10. Alternate two, 11,800. Yeah, yeah, just add them up. The evidence is not up. 476 and 50,000, it's not 539. This, yeah, but that's 539.
What, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, what's that? Uh, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk, what, what are you saying?
Okay, okay.
The numbers.
Oh, because you have the school portion in there too. Okay. Okay, so we'll just indicate the base bid amount in alternate one and alternate two. We won't put any dollar amounts.
That's the contract value. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I was looking at just the first box. I wasn't looking.
Exactly. And then I looked at the bottom. So we're just gonna go off that first line. Alternate, base bid and alternate one and alternate two.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Deep, how fast can this company start?
Um, I'm gonna have to get them quickly. And we'll work around the school schedule. We're gonna do it in phases, like one side first and use the other side, you know, half and half. Um, so we'll work around the school schedule. I'll get them started as soon as you approve it.
Council Chair. Honestly, like we always say, and we've been remonstrant, cheapest is not always the best or the greatest. I'll be honest with you. Searching a lot of these companies doing reviews and stuff, you may take it to a vote. I just don't think the cheapest bid is the best bid.
I know. Financially, you don't have anything but the cheapest available.
I know. But material too, and reputation and this kind of work makes a difference.
Councilman, I completely understand it.
Every, believe it or not, every one of these companies has a lawsuit. It's, it's in the business.
And I'm sure that, you know, that's, it is what it is. But right now, there's a motion on the table, guys. I mean, we sat almost 45 minutes just talking between this and, and it's time, like, you can hear in the residents, like, what do you guys want us to do? Not fix the parking lot?
I want to fix the parking. I just don't think the cheapest bidder is the best, best choice here.
I know, but at this moment, we don't have more money to pick a higher bid. We just don't. You know, it's one thing, we don't even, we don't even have money to be able to fix the parking lot. I don't want to go with the higher, with one even higher. So it's unfortunate. And, you know, I received an email today about other bidders that have pleaded guilty. That's it. Let's just, we, we have a motion on the table. Let's just move forward. Okay? We have a motion here. Mr. Deep said he's gonna get this out as soon as possible.
Soon as possible, yes, sir.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer to choose, uh, the company name again?
Asphalt Specialists LLC.
Asphalt Specialists LLC. Uh, and choosing one and two, correct?
Correct.
With the inclusion of one and two.
Okay, that's to fix the curbs, the drainage, the parking lot, widen everything over, all in.
The driveway, thicker driveway, yeah.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right. Madam Clerk, please take your call.
Tom Winsell.
No.
Hassan Sab.
Yes.
Robert Constant.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Moby Dun.
Yes.
Motion carries six, one.
Did you see Robert Constant?
I did.
Yep. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. I, I was, I go through the check mark. All right, congratulations, guys. Wish you guys the best of luck.
Mr. Isa, when's your plan on actually opening up?
For heat. Get with Mr. Deep. Next up is Library Director McCaffrey, request for bids at Caroline Kennedy Library Storage Facility Repairs.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the library to go out for bids for the repair of the library garage to be paid from the maintenance account of which the current balance is over 70,000 as outlined in seven, uh, dash B.
Support made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yep.
Uh, Director, if you don't mind, any idea how big is that, how big is that garage?
Um, if you walk outside the door here, you actually can kind of see it on the parking lot. Yeah, it's, it's, it's got a good foundation. The walls are okay. They need to be straightened out. Uh, but everything else needs to be replaced, basically. Uh, and it's getting pretty close to a pretty blighted state at this point, so I figured, you know, we should clean it up. And both libraries have a very, they were built really well, but their storage was poor at both buildings. And through 20 years, we have stuff that we use for our programs, a number of other things that we want to actually store so we don't cost the taxpayers buying it again and again and again. Um, and also, another good purpose for it is kind of as a storage dock in a way, because it's got a nice driveway, a trucking backup to it. We can put a lift there. Currently, when we ever need anything with a skid, it just sits out here by the bike rack. And I have to go in there and hurriedly rush it all in so it doesn't get rained on or someone doesn't, you know, mess with the stuff, so.
Mr. Deep, are you familiar with the garage? Do you think we should maybe, once we, if it's approved to go out for bid, do you think we should get a bid to, for a hull replacement versus just repairs? I'm not sure about the, just so we can.
So I, I looked at that garage and saw that the building director, and we both determined that it's structurally very sound. It, it is, it has T-111 siding, which is exterior plywood, you know. It, it, it's, it's, the siding is gone. Um, but, you know, to re-site it and put vinyl and all this, it's much less expensive.
So that's all it needs? Because I'm talking about walls is to be.
The walls are fine. They were hit that one time. They can be, it, it, it's structurally very sound. And it's definitely worth saving because if you are to rebuild that thing, you're paying like 10 times at least the cost. You know, siding is, is very inexpensive, cosmetic.
Good to know. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on this? Mos, Mos. Okay. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Uh, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up is reports from mayor, none. Reports from city officials, Treasurer Hicks Clayton, Treasurer's Office Budget Amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the Treasurer's Office Budget as outlined in nine, uh, dash A. General Ledger number 101253707100, tighter part-time, taking out 5,000 from General Ledger 101253709000, overtime adding 5,000. Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up is nine B. City Engineer Deep Water Meter Replacement Change Order Number One.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved change number, uh, change order number one in the amount of $51,319.20 to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Water Meter Replacement Project as outlined in nine, dash B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Deep. Uh, I was, I was going through, it says, um, Says here, plumbing system operable and requires, uh, requires freezing. What do you mean?
So, um, this is for the water meter replacement project.
Correct.
So some of the older neighbors that we have had issues with trying to stop, shut the water off into the house. Some of these issues we ran into, um, stop valve was under concrete. So they paved over it, so we couldn't get to it. Uh, or the line coming into the house was so short from the wall, it had no place to put a valve. And you can't change the meter with the water running, obviously. So the alternate was a lot less expensive to put a $200 kit to freeze that pipe while we replace that. It, it, they do make them, you know, so they work. You can put that on there. It freezes the flow long enough for you to replace the meter and then thaw that line and it opens up. So that is in lieu of having to go back out and bust the concrete and try to get, you know, stop valve working.
Okay, that's, that's, that's amazing to be honest with you. But I'm looking here, there's 255 of them. How come they haven't provided any list of addresses to see which one are they doing?
Well, the, the job itself, so, um, they're all over. Mostly, so what we did is we started for, in the south side, we're currently replacing all over the city. But we started with the south end of Dearborn Heights for two reasons. One, uh, we don't have, there are a lot of older homes, so if you are to have a problem, we're currently at almost 50%. So I'm actually way ahead of schedule, um, on the 30,000, 28,000 meters, so we're, we're moving quite fast. So that's number one. And number two is we had issues with, um, south end is the like, the higher likelihood of lead service lines, which if you recall, this project, by the way, we, we just had a surprise visit yesterday all day from the State Eagle Inspector to see how we're spending our money for lease projects. And she went and looked at every.
No, no, I understand where you were, everything you're saying, but I'm saying that, like, Waitrim didn't even, or whoever.
It's not Waitrim, it's, it's another company.
I mean, this change order came from Waitrim.
Yes, no, I know, they're managing, they're providing.
No, no, I understand. They're saying there's two-hundred-and-fifty-five of them.
Okay.
Can we at least be provided to two-hundred-and-fifty-five addresses that they did the work to this?
Be happy to.
Let's prefer those two over the nine B, nine C over, back to administration before we approve this. By the way, I hate the change orders. I hate when, like, Councilman Wenzel was just talking about this.
No, no, but some of them, some of them, just, just so, okay, so we're, since we're talking about the second one, they, they see, the Clean Water Drinking Change Order, L-41. So the project, when it was designed, we were actually only replacing parts of the pavement where the pipes go in. So one, while we were doing that, the other parts, especially on the south end deteriorate. We couldn't even drive over it. They just fallen apart. So it was added to this project since we're out there replacing pavement. And keep in mind, this project is fifty percent funded by the state through a grant. So by putting it this way versus paying for it from Act 51, I'm getting fifty percent of that cost paid by the state.
No, no, how much you call, Mr. Deep, but just looking for more information. Oh, we're replacing, you know, we, we were buying two-hundred-and-fifty-five kits for two-hundred-and-fifty-five homes. I would like to see those addresses for two-hundred-and-fifty-five homes.
Council Chair?
No problem.
Just about freezing these pipes, actually, former Councilman Ray Muska reached out to me two weeks ago about one of his friends. They came in to change his meter. They couldn't shut off the valve from outside. And so the only option is to really freeze it. It's a very common practice.
I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying, we're buying two-hundred-and-fifty-five kits. I would like to see which homes we bought those kits for.
I'm pretty sure it's documented because.
Well, I don't see it here. Do you have it?
Uh-uh. But I said, I'm pretty sure they have it.
I know we have it. Okay, we'll, we'll send the documents. What I wanted to do is have that on record so we're able to, I don't want this job to stop.
No, no, definitely not.
So we can provide these on, on, on weekly, monthly basis, if you like. In fact, what we're doing is.
If you're gonna invoice, at least apply it to the invoice.
Right, right. Oh, but you want the actual invoice?
So now, so you're saying we did two-hundred-and-fifty-five homes or we're just buying kits for?
We're buying kits.
We're doing that many.
Sorry, I just called Vaughn. He's actually online listening and I got some clarification. So first of all, you're looking at the wrong column. It's the first column. It's two-hundred quantity-wise, it's two-fifty-five for the price. But this is an estimate of how many we're gonna find moving forward. The ones that they currently have, they do have some addresses, but we don't have the full addresses for the two-hundred that they're requesting in the change order.
So, but we don't have two-hundred addresses that we're gonna use it on?
No, that's an estimate of how many they're expecting to find, but we do have some already.
I don't know how we'd get the estimate.
And again, Vaughn Martin is on Zoom if you want to ask any additional questions.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell first. Make sure your microphone's up.
Are these, yeah, are these kits permanent when they're installed or you remove?
No, you remove it.
So are they reusable?
No, no.
Okay, yeah, because I'm not understanding it. I'll have to go look.
So it's like a chemical you apply on the pipe?
Oh, gotcha.
And then it freezes it, and then when you're done, you remove it and it's a single one-time use.
Okay, now I understand.
It, it's, it's common practice. Councilman Saab knows about this. It's, you know, plumbers use that. In fact, on larger pipes, if you can't stop the flow and you need to get work done.
Good thing, okay.
Council Chair?
Yes, sir, Councilman Wenzel.
What's the odds of damaging a pipe to this procedure?
I asked that question, really, I mean, these are old pipes and frost and freeze and thaw, I mean, you know. I haven't run, so the few that we've done, no damage was done.
I know anytime a pipe freezes in a house, it bursts and it freezes.
Well, yeah, it's the short part coming from the basement wall or from the outside into your house right before the meter. So we're not talking about freezing the entire plumbing system.
It only takes a little section like that to freeze.
Right, right, but it's, no, we haven't seen.
You haven't had anything pipe damage?
We're not doing it excessively, like, long period of time. I've seen these people replace meters in less than twenty minutes, fifteen minutes, ten minutes, depending on access, if the meter is accessible. They're really good at it. I mean, they have all the parts they needed. We, we ran into things like in the city with adapters that sizes were not standard in most cases to the house plumbing and to the, to the city pipes. So they have to use adapters to try to make, you know.
Do they have a procedure in place if they freeze it and they can't get it hooked up? It thaws out, starts screwing water out. Is there a procedure in place?
Well, they do have a plumber with them. I mean, I don't know what kind of.
How would you stop it then? Is there, I mean, it'd be good, it floods someone's basement.
No, we, we haven't run, we've got about fourteen thousand done so far.
Yeah. How many times have they used that freezing technique?
Few.
Just a few?
Yeah. But we just want to, because, because of what we're seeing now, you know, we're just tracking two things. The, where the shut-off valves are on the outside, so the city can be aware of them. And then two, where I have lead service, which we've never tallied before, so now I have an idea where all the lead service are.
They're not freezing any lead, it's all copper.
No, 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 no. Lead, lead service, which is another thing, we, we told the inspector yesterday, is actually under this project or under the water main project. If you run into lead service, we remove them. We're not keeping any safety concern.
Okay, guys.
Okay, can, can we hear from Vaughn about how did he come up with this estimate?
What's wrong?
No, nothing, nothing. I didn't know he was online. Vaughn?
While we are waiting on Vaughn, while, while we are waiting on Vaughn, I just want to make a quick announcement. Tonight is my fantasy football draft, and it's at eight P.M., and I've been doing it for like fourteen years now. So if I do leave early, I'm letting you know that, that this is something that I, I never have on Tuesdays, but it was the only day that it worked for ten other guys, so.
We didn't hear that.
No, no, I'm very transparent. I don't hide. I don't leave council meetings early in four years. I don't, but this is a thing we've been doing for thirteen, fourteen. This is your fourteen. Look, I think the good news is, you know, I don't know if we need to hear from Vaughn. I think what we can do is we can give an estimate of a hundred, and if you need more, you can come back.
You can come back to us.
That, that's why I think, and let's get the number to approve the quantity of a hundred.
And I'll get you addresses or when they, when they become available, which is apply the addresses.
Can you do the math? I'm breaking down exactly what it is.
So I'm, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna go ahead and change my motion. I did the motion, right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and change the motion to approve the change order number one in the amount of.
Fifty-one thousand, three nineteen.
No, no, this is gonna be half of that. Fifty-one, three nineteen, twenty, divided by two, to, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Twenty, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
And to find it to be one hundred?
One hundred.
And is, but then we have two fifty, not two hundred?
No, they had two hundred kits. We're going down to, it's two fifty-five per kit.
Let's, let's do, and then can I get Councilwoman Menalowski Maxwell to second that motion amendment?
Second.
Okay, to reduce it from two hundred to one hundred. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up is City Engineer Deep, CWSRF, Lower Ruze CSO Area L-41 Project Change Order Number One.
Council Chair?
Councilman Saab.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the change order number one to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, CWSRF, Lower Ruze CSO Area L-41 Projects outlined in nine.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. I liked the engagement today, guys. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Rose has it. Motion carries. Next up is the Do-It Director Cooper.
Do it. Yeah, do it.
Do it.
Do IT.
Do it.
Director Cooper.
Just do it.
It says, do it.
Do it.
I'm sorry.
It's caps.
Private IT.
Director of IT, well, it says Director of IT, Director Cooper, Telecommunications Credit Card.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
Moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the assurance of a credit card only to be used to pay for telecommunication invoices that do not allow ACH payment, which includes internet cable and phones. This card will have a limit of twenty thousand dollars per month as outlined in nine D.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
You know me, I got a question.
Yep.
I'm definitely gonna have a question on this, especially when it comes to giving out money uncontrollably. I seen that you're not gonna control it, but twenty thousand dollars, what's our current limit?
Right now, all of our, our city-issued credit cards are fourteen hundred dollars. What's that? Well, this is the Parks and Rec Police Department.
Why do you need twenty thousand dollars a month on, you know?
Because that's roughly what we, what we pay for our, all our telecommunication bills monthly. That includes, again, all of our city-issued cell phones. That includes our DPW Geotab tracking on their vehicles. That includes all of our internet, all of our buildings.
How have you been paying it regardless?
We, we pay it, but again, this is looking forward to try to streamline what we're doing so, because we're constantly getting hit with late fees.
I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm, I'm okay with increasing this for you. Twenty thousand dollars is not a number I can swallow. I can see, I mean, honestly, I want to go five, but I feel like ten is the real number.
Our, just to let you know, our Comcast, which we're under contract with internet bill, is five thousand, twenty dollars every month. That feeds our internet to all of our bills.
Council Chair?
Well, I think ten thousand is a fair number. Twenty thousand is just, it's, it's really hard for me to come out and say yes, especially when you, we've been operating this way for the last four years. I were coming out and saying, well, let's just.
Again, this is two, this is two, this can be a credit card I don't want, I don't even physically need to have on me. This is to set up so we can make those payments in a, in a timely manner.
But the point is, is to make sure that we actually have the money, because what happens is.
We do have, it's all budgeted. I, when, when I, when, on my job, my telecommunications line item has it in there, when we did our budget, I went through and I, just prior years, all right, this is what we're paying, what we're spending. I always, like I said in my, my original motion is, hey, sometimes those little taxes and fees you can't really avoid because that's what, you know, Comcast does or AT&amp;T does and everything. But that's why typically we spend about eighteen thousand dollars a month on all of our bills that we would be using this for.
Why do we have to go to twenty?
And it's already, it's already budgeted, because again, those fees that sometimes you don't always, you know, you always can control. I'd rather be, I'd rather be a little bit safer than, hey, I can't, I can't pay a bill with it. Again, this is a credit card I don't want. I can stay in her office, can stay in the Comcast's office. This is just to streamline what we're doing, sir.
Yeah, so going online.
Council Chair? I think what he's saying is, we gotta pay it either way, and the way we're paying it now, we're paying probably extra in late fees that we can get rid of by doing this. You know, I personally think the twenty thousand's okay. If we have a problem, we can come back and readdress it, but let's just give him a chance to show us what he can do with that.
Okay, I like that. Thank you for that, Councilman.
Council Chair?
I want to echo it over, Councilwoman Saab.
It'd be on my credit card as I have to show the invoice of paying that credit card, and it all gets submitted every single month.
Yeah, I'd like to send it every month. I know we did that for the police as well, but guess what? When we did the police, we started seeing things like Lowe's Hotel. We started, I started seeing things like a pizza. I started seeing alcohol. I was like, what the hell's going on here? Yeah, so we brought that number right back down.
But that's also why I say it's, it's only for the telecommunications. You're making a motion work.
Yeah, I don't want to see gas and everything else.
We're our cell phones and stuff. We don't want our cell phone shut off.
Well, again, this motion, Council Chair, only to pay invoices for the telecommunications. It's not gonna be used for anything else. It's not otherwise to use for something.
And I, and again, hopefully, when we fully set it up, it's a credit card, it's in a drawer, never to be used ever again for this.
Okay, any other discussion? Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is the Interim Controller Baydoun's Infrastructure Resiliency Plan Contract Execution.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the Infrastructure Resiliency Plan Contract between the city and OHM advisors for, for a total cost net to exceed two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars, and authorized the mayor and clerk to sign that contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorized the mayor and controller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account five nine two, five three six, nine two four, five nine two, of which their current budget is two million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand as outlined in nine dash E.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Const, uh, sorry, Councilwoman Breyer.
Councilwoman Breyer.
Councilwoman Breyer, yes, I gave you the last one. I gotta switch it up sometimes, Councilman, sorry.
No problem.
All right, any discussion? I, I gotta say, it's good that we're doing this.
Okay.
You know, but I, I don't get like what the actual plan is here. And I just feel like this is a lot of money. City Council hasn't been provided with some type of, you know, some type of presentation, like the residents, the city council, we don't, we don't know what we're spending the money on. You know, it's like, hey, well, let's do this resilience plan. Let's do this resilience plan. And then, and then we just go ahead and if anybody's got water for the treasurer, that'd be awesome. Okay. But if, the, the truth is, I would love to support this, okay? But there's no like structure, how it's happening, who's in charge, who's doing the oversight. Hang on, everybody wants to jump up, Matty, hang on, hang on. Just, just let me finish my conversation before you can jump up. And, and the truth is, like, let the residents see it, let the council see it, have a presentation, and then come back and put it before the council. I know you guys gave us the last bid that we, we had to first initially approve of, which we read. This is, this is a big investment. It's a big contract. Let this company come in here that, that loves us so much, not just give us a website, to come in here and, and give us a breakdown, a run-through of what they're gonna do and what the plan is and what the future of the next ten years of the city looks like. Not just, all right, here that we chose this company and let's go ahead and prove. We're just so, we're just not transparent. We're not like digitalizing ourselves for this community. And it's just like, snap your fingers, come on, everybody just approve it, approve it. I can tell you, for me, I want the residents to be able to see, including myself, a rundown of what this is supposed to look like for these, you know, these two motions. I'm not saying I don't support them, but I want, I want to be presented from this company of what their contract is like, what their expectation is. Anybody's resume can look good. Put them before us. Let's have the conversation. Let's enjoy these moments. And this is, this is a great thing. But we need to like, we need to do better at letting residents at home and this body to be engaged and be involved. And I feel like we failed to do that.
So for these two items, the companies will be involved with resident meetings as well as council meetings, as well as administration meetings. This is a CDBGDR state-funded project, so although the amount is a big amount, I believe eighty percent is funded by the state. The, once you award the bid, the project proposal presented last week outlines what they would like to do and how they would like to do it. Council Chair, they're gonna be doing all the meetings with you, the residents, and ensuring that.
But Matty, you know what's bothering me, uh, Interim Controller, my, my issue is, Mr. Baydoun?
Yeah.
Is that we're here and we're about to give them their money and they're not here. And, and, and they're like, whoa, you don't have the money's coming. I don't care where the money's coming from. If it's coming, at the end of the day, it's coming from a taxpayer. It's coming from the state. The taxpayer's paid it.
No, I understand that.
Hang on. So like, and I'm not, this says, not on you, I don't know why, like, anytime you guys bring something forward and we question something like, hey, we want to hear from you, you guys all get so offended. You get so, you guys get so agitated, like, why are you asking me to do that? Because it's rightfully so that the residents should be able to get a rundown on what's happening. The same thing happened with DARPA money. We had twenty-four million dollars. Oh, what do you guys want to do? Then you guys did your own thing. Same thing is happening in almost every, Councilman Saab had the same issue about the fire station. Anytime we ask you guys to do something, everybody wants to give us their ends if butts about it. I'm, I'm gonna tell you, for me, when you're spending money like this, I'd rather have a sit-down where the community can be engaged, the, the council can be engaged, they can give us, yeah, sure, they gave us a proposal. Guess what? I can give you my resume right now. But you go through, you go through some type of verbal and, and visual appearance. There's never, this administration has failed to do that these last four years. And so the norm has been, we don't need to have to engage the community in the council. Sorry.
I just said that the company will.
No, the company's asking to get approved and then they're gonna come.
So I do have a question then. Last meeting, that should have been mentioned, that, hey, reach out to the company so we can do a study session.
I had that conversation with Mr. Deep.
Well, that wasn't put on record with me.
I, I don't need to have that conversation with you. I had a conversation with Mr. Deep. He should have sent it over to you.
Okay, I, that's a head scratcher, but okay.
So I still have my note from last time. This is the, these are the four projects that Disaster Recovery Team had authorized after the, I, I went through this. I still have my notes from last time. And, and the only request from council was, bring us the contract so we can approve them. But I went through all the steps.
Mr. Deep, I said, I heard that conversation with you.
Sir, August twelfth, it was on, it, it is taped. You can, you can watch it. I went through all these items. This is, this election process, the, the out-to-bid, it was all approved by Disaster Recovery, by, by the, by the government. Even this election process was, the scope of services was approved by them. We didn't. They're paying eighty-plus percent on all these four projects.
So why is it so offensive to you guys?
I'm not offending, I'm not offending. If you had said that last council.
I did, I had that conversation with you.
No, you didn't. On August twelfth, I went through all this. I still have my notes. And the only request was bring us those contracts to see before we sign them. No, you didn't. On August twelfth, I went through all this, I still have my notes. And the only request was, bring us those con, contract to see before we sign them. So we're bringing the contracts now. If you don't wanna sign them, that's fine, we will cancel the projects, no big deal. I'm, I'm just saying.
Hey, listen, man, hold on for a second. Like, that, that bullying where you guys just say, oh, well, you know, if you don't, if you don't do it, we won't bring you the contract. Mr. Deep, hang on a second, please. I'm having a conversation with you. But like the, but like the condescending way of like, well, if you guys don't wanna do it, you guys don't wanna sign it.
This bullying isn't gonna work.
That's what it is, bullying.
You're bullying, that's all it is. You're bullying us. You don't wanna approve it, don't approve it.
No, I'm not telling you, I'm saying, let's bring, hang on, Mr. Deep, please for a second. You, you're not gonna turn the words that I just used and you bullying me to say that I'm bullying you. What I'm saying is, if you wanna have this, it's a lot of money, okay? The residents, hang on, I'm, I am echoing the voices of the residents, whether you like to hear it or not. I'm echoing the voices of the residents. The truth is this, I'm not telling you we don't wanna approve them. So stop bullying and saying, you guys don't wanna approve them, whatever. What I'm telling you is, let us have a conversation, let them present this, we're giving them almost, I don't care if it's who it's coming from, if the state's paying eighty percent of it, we're still paying the other twenty. All we're saying is, if you're gonna get two million dollars from the city of Dearborn Heights, present to us.
Do you know the reason why we're getting anymore and we can't get any grants? It's because of this. Everyone's watching our council meeting. I can't even talk to people anymore because they say they know we can't deliver. We've been working on this for over a year. Don't approve it, I'm just saying, I keep trying to delay it, he's on our.
Why is it, don't approve it? Why can't you say sure I will bring them in?
Counselor Chair. I, I think he's just frustrated because the communication between us and council is not very clear. Last meeting, we brought him to the table. You're saying you had a.
By the way, I had a conversation, said with Mr. Deep on August twelfth.
That wasn't on record, so other people in the community, as well as myself, were not aware of that. I would have contacted O H M, who has been contacting me, said, hey, we gotta prove, when can we start this project? I'm like, well, we have to get, get the contract back to council. I have no problem.
Is there, again, is there a timeframe where you're like, oh my God, if you don't do this now, they're gonna, we're gonna lose this? Cause you know, that's always the excuse on you guys. You supposedly, you always come to us last second. All I'm saying to you is, please, I know Mr. Deep's been chattering there in the background because he doesn't like to hear the truth. The truth is this, all we're asking you guys to do is bring it before the council and give us, give us an update on it. That's it. Let's hear from them.
Counselor Chair, that, what the frustration was with Mr. Deep and why he just walked out.
I don't hear the frustration, there should be nothing about being frustrated.
But what he's saying is, we came la, in last council.
I had that conversation with them. I'm not, I, I won't be, be said that I'm a liar.
I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm not saying who said what, I'm just saying it was never informed.
You know, by the way, I just want you to know, in further record, this is the fifth time on a, on a different occasion, I've said to Mr. Deep, when it came to designing the fire station, hey, don't choose a company, let the council and the body and the residents be involved. Okay, okay, okay. No, what do you guys wanna do involved for? Any company that they have brought out for bids or wanting to do business with the city, I swear, guys, all I'm saying is, for the sake of the residents, this young lady right here might have a question. She might wanna be engaged a little bit more. But it's like we're silencing people and saying, nobody should know how we're doing it or what company we're choosing or why we're using this company. Please, Mariana, hang on one second. Because, and this is not the first time I've said this to Mr. Deep off the record. I said it too, I walked when I was at city hall. And he showed me, uh, about, uh, you know, how we're gonna be doing all the roads and fixing up Ann Arbor Trail. And I said, hey, that's great. Let these companies come in, let them present, let's hear from them. That's all I'm saying. Even this Ashford company that we just chose. Let's, you're gonna get five hundred thousand dollars from the city, come in here. I just told, uh, our H R director, I walked up to him today, there's a, there's a bid that's out there right now, six companies, they wanted to choose. I, I think, I think, uh, George is, is C C'd on the email, where I said, if these companies are gonna collect the money from the city, let them all come and present. There's nothing wrong with that. Councilman Wanso, Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, Councilman Ahmad, myself, Councilman Sob, Councilwoman Brier, Councilman Constant, should at least be a part of hearing what these other companies have to say. Instead, we're just given a tally sheet and they say, based on the recommendation of Mr. Dever, based on the recommendation of, of Manny Baydun, who Mr. Deep is doing for him, is saying, choose this company. No. And I don't wanna get into deeper as to why I'm asking these questions, by the way. Because I promise you that if I start telling you why I feel this and what companies were chosen, you would know why I'm saying what I'm saying. The reality is, I'm protecting residents. And I'm also protecting a potential lawsuit to come against the city. But the things that the information that I've been given and the companies that we've been choosing, it's been unfair to the city. That, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. And that is not me making any type of accusation. Because if anybody wants to know the facts, reach out to me and I'll give it to you.
I would like to reach out to you.
So this company, at least for me, this is gonna go to a vote. The council might say, I don't agree with you, Mo, we're just gonna choose them. For me, I would like to see these companies come before us and say, this is what we're gonna offer to the city, we're gonna spend two million dollars in the city of Dearborn Heights, this is what Dearborn Heights is gonna get.
It's two hundred ninety-one thousand.
Okay, two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars.
Not too, the balance is two million.
How much are they getting though? Two million dollars?
No.
From the city, two hundred and ninety-one thousand. From the grants in total, it's two million dollars.
Thank you. So they're making two million dollars. Regardless, we received a grant to be able to choose this company.
This company is not for two million, this company is for two hundred ninety-one thousand.
Oh, sorry. Well, this particular one is for two hundred and ninety-one. I think the second one is the one that's two million. Um, but again, just to clarify, the bidding process that you're requesting, it is out of the norm in municipalities. You don't typically invite non-contracted companies to come engage the community without getting paid for it. That is a process that will happen once the bid is awarded, and it is a process of this entire engagement. They simply give you a physical proposal, which is normal business. You don't engage with them, you don't request them to open themselves up to questions from their competitors, to see the plans that their competitors have in a public setting. It is just not a common trend. I understand that that's what you're requesting, but it is not something that's required from federal grants, it is not something that's required from our procurement policies. I understand the value in you wanting to interview every single company, but again, that is the role of the administration. If you don't trust the administration.
We're not gonna follow the recommendation that you, it, all we're saying is, engage the residents.
We are, but that comes after you award the bid. The companies aren't gonna engage residents without being paid for it. That is, that is part of what their business is. So I understand your concerns. I'm just trying to clarify what the regular process of grants and pro, proper bidding is, according to those grants, which we have followed and it has been approved every step of the way. They even come out and take pictures of all of our projects once they're in place. After you have a contract, you can request as many meetings, as many public hearings, as many in, input information that you might want. But if you don't have a contract, you're not really in a position to make requests that you're not under a contract with. So just to clarify, like, it's not that we're trying to be hard, it's not that we're trying to hide things, but this is not a common practice. And in all honesty, even if we ask these companies, I don't understand why they would be willing to spend hours here with our residents before having a contract for us.
You know why? I'm gonna answer that question for you. I'm gonna tell you the truth. Madam Clerk, I want you to email Mariana the minutes from two thousand and seven when the master plan was brought before the city. You know how, you know what the process was like? I'm gonna tell you how the process went. They came in here and they presented to the body. They presented to residents, they presented to the council, and that's how they chose their company. You know what this, you know what this administration has never done? Other than the golf course, never given a presentation process. The only time there was a presentation process is when the body asked for it. Look what I want you to do, and I want you to go to the two thousand and seven minutes. I want you to email it to Mariana and so I can explain to Mariana that this is an out-of-the-norm municipality that the, that the mayor does it. Guess what? It was, it was the right policy procedure that Dearborn Heights did in the past, and Dearborn Heights no longer does today. That's, that's where my issues and concerns come from. I know. Look through the minutes from two thousand and seven. But anyways, there's a motion on the table here to appro, to approve this company. Any other discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Robert Coniston.
Yes.
Tom Winsell.
Yes.
Hassan Sab.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Nancy Brier.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Mo Baydun.
No.
Motion carries six one.
Okay, next up is interim comptroller Baydun Comprehensive Master and Environmental Resilience Plan Contract Execution.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the comprehensive master and environmental resilience plan contract between the city and McKenna for a cost of one hundred and twenty thousand and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and for the treasurer to issue payment from account number five nine two, five three six, nine two four, five nine two, as outlined in nine F.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman, uh.
How many, how much money is in this account?
Any discussion?
Uh, it's the two million, the same amount as the previous one, it's coming out of the same budget line item.
Okay, thank you.
C D B G. Any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Hassan Sab.
Yes.
Tom Winsell.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Nancy Brier.
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Robert Coniston.
Yes.
Mo Baydun.
No.
Motion carries six one.
Okay, next up is interim comptroller Baydun Street Pavement Program Contract twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven Contract Execution.
Counselor Chair.
Councilwoman Brier.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the street pavement program twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven contract between the city and A N G Construction for a total cost of three million seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, which will expire in twenty twenty-seven. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller clerk to sign the necessary warrants, treasurer to issue payment for major and local street repairs, G L accounts two oh three dash two oh three dash eight eight zero dot five hundred and two oh two dash two oh two dash eight eight zero dash, or point, five hundred, as outlined in nine G.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any, any discussions?
Uh, we asked for a couple clauses here and, now look at this contract, it's a very ba, basic, basic contract.
Yeah, so the clauses, um.
Where it was added, the year, the year, the year, the year.
That was, that was my error, uh, when we included that standard, uh, thing. I forgot to include the special provisions clause as a separate document cause that's our standard, uh, construction agreement. So I have to create the special provisions with the three, uh, items that you listed in the prior meeting. I have them in front of me. I can include that document into the contract to make sure.
Let's, uh, let's refer this back and bring it back at the next meeting with those.
Okay.
Pots put on there, please.
No problem.
So we're gonna, Councilwoman Brier, are you okay with referring this back to updating the contract that we agreed to?
Yes.
Alright, Councilman Coniston, do you second that?
Reluctantly, yes.
Alright, refer back to administration. All right, motion made by Councilwoman Brier, seconded by Councilman Coniston. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have a motion carries. Next up is library.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Chair.
Just what, these, uh, comptroller, uh, items, I mean, and it's probably no big deal, but in the last month, we've never had a comptroller come and give us, uh, put items on the agenda before. And all of a sudden, now that we have dozens of them, I mean, is there a reason why the comptroller's presenting them to us now instead of the departments?
Mr. Deep to get away from the bid process.
Yeah.
And so let it to go through the building, uh, the comptroller's department, cause that's.
Just the bid process? This is contract execution.
Yeah, well, the bid went through the comptroller's department.
So the whole thing's controlled by the comptroller's department, the execution and everything now? That's, I didn't know, and I, I never heard that, this is the first time I heard that.
Yeah.
That's a new process we're doing?
I mean, we, we, I guess, I don't know. I mean, look, Councilman Wanso, the mayor's not here.
Yeah.
Mayor's not here.
Nothing against the.
No, I understand, I'm not, I understand his point.
It's like, we've never had the comptroller present stuff to us before, never. I mean, now it's dozens of them.
Um, I will speak to, uh, the councilman, um, uh, Mr. Deep normally forward all contracts to us, but I don't think Mr. uh, Baydun did that with this one, but we will look at it and review it.
Counselor Chair.
Yeah.
We hit this whole body, including Councilman Winsell there, had the same arguments about a month and a half ago that we wanted through the comptroller, now he doesn't remember.
No, I don't, I don't think that's what, yeah, I don't know. Hey, guys. Alright, next up, nine eight, library director, what's that?
I saw you had a concussion, maybe I don't remember.
Okay, nine, guys, point of order, guys, let's go. Library Director McCaffrey purchased and payment of library wireless upgrade.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Malinowski Maxwell.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of upgraded wireless hardware for the Carolyn Kennedy Library and the John F. Kennedy Junior Library in payment to B A E in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and one cent to be issued from grants account number seven three eight dash seven three eight dash eight oh eight, of which the current budget is fifty thousand as lo, outlined in nine eight.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman.
Uh, Mr. Cooper, how come we didn't get more, uh, bids just from B A E?
One, we're actually already under contract with B A E for a lot of these services. And two, because of how these, uh, connecting to our firewalls, only B A E Networks is allowed to have access to our firewalls. I'm not opening up to multiple companies, it's unsafe for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have a motion carries. Library Director McCaffrey purchased and payment of library, uh, patron P Cs.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of twenty-seven library patron P Cs for a total cost of seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars to be issued from grants account number seven three eight, seven three eight, eight oh eight, of which the current budget is fifty thousand as outlined in nine I.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Sob. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have a motion carries. Director McCaffrey, Director Cooper, thank you guys so much for that. Next up is Police Chief Hader Exxon Upgrades and Update Contract.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the updated contract between the city and Exxon for a total cost of two million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents over a five-year period and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, which will expire in December twenty twenty-nine. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from account one oh one, three hundred, eight one eight, zero zero zero. Funding will need to come from fund balance as outlined in nine dash.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion?
Uh, Counselor Chair, I know we asked them to rewrite this contract and we dropped it from ten years to five years, I think we asked them to do that, correct? If I'm not.
Yeah, but I also want to look at like the cost and what we can and can't afford.
Correct, but why, why is coming from fund balance now?
Here's our captain.
Captain Hatton with the police department. So we did, uh, obviously, we had the study session in May. Um, that's when you guys, we presented an initial contract that was ten years, you guys were uncomfortable with it. You asked us to also consult with Plant Moran, um, which we did that. Um, we got an initial quote for a five-year contract, uh, we presented that to Plant Moran, they had some concerns, but they also had some very good feedback. Part of their feedback was to see if we could scale back some things and, uh, which we did. So we scaled back, we, uh, removed the drone program from the contract, we removed most of the A I platform from the contract. So the quote that we presented to Plant Moran in June was for just over three thousand dollars. By doing something, the scaling back, we took almost nine hundred thousand dollars off it and almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. So at this point, I believe we have scaled it back as much as we can, and we did do the five-year contract because that was the recommendation you guys had for us.
Do you know when is this contract will expire, Captain?
Twenty twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-nine.
No, no, not this one, like the one we have right now.
The current contract will be a twenty twenty-seven, correct.
Twenty twenty-seven, the contract.
Twenty twenty-seven. I don't know, I can't recall, what's the reason why we had to jump into all the contract, do you?
Yeah, because, uh, we, we, uh.
I know they wanted to add more, offer more stuff.
What it's gonna cost us by the time it expires and what we're gonna be paying now is gonna be almost double. So if we try to get what we're getting today under contract, in twenty twenty-seven, the number's gonna be a lot more.
Yeah, and it shows it right on the front. The total savings by doing it now will be a savings of over a million dollars.
You, you're gonna have to have body cams and, and, uh, and, uh, taser guns and everything.
Tasers, body worn cameras, cameras in our building, cameras, in-car cameras. Um, we are going to have some of the A I platforms, some of the A I platform will be the body worn camera translation feature that you guys saw firsthand. It'll also be the, uh, virtual reality training, which you guys actually participated in, and the draft one, um, platform, which will assist officers in writing reports more accurately and efficiently.
Counselor Chair, my second question, I don't know if, uh, Matty can help, how come is, is everything coming from fund balance? Nothing was budgeted? I mean, we do have this contract, why, nothing was budgeted before?
Because we're only budgeting the current, the current contract.
No, I understand, but now they're saying everything is coming from fund balance, at least a portion, whatever we had before should come from wherever it was budgeted for.
So for this year, this is a five-year, um, uh, program, so although you can say it's coming from fund balance and next year's budgets and the budgets after that, uh, we have to assess the city, their revenue sources and allocate cost. Um, this year, you could possibly pay about half of that charge out of the contractual services, the rest of it, you'd have to use fund balance for that. It used to be four.
It used to be.
Yeah, it used to be four. Yeah. It used to be forfeiture, but, uh, forfeiture funds are not going to cover that much at this point.
How much is in the forfeiture account?
I believe 1.4 million, right? Give me one moment.
Council chair. Sergeant, do we still have the Star Chase?
Uh, it's captain. Uh, we do have the Star Chase. We have it not implemented yet. We're working to implement it. We have the equipment, but we haven't implemented it. We're working on it.
Is that, is it on any of the cars?
It is on the cars. We're just not using it because we don't have a policy procedure written yet. And we have to put people through training to use it.
Is that part of this package?
No.
No?
Completely different.
Sorry about that.
I'm so sorry, guys. I do have to excuse myself.
So currently we have 1.6 million dollars in forfeiture funds, but the contract, current contract with Exxon is still coming out of that.
And the body worn cameras.
And the body worn cameras. Want to be prorated if we entered into this contract?
Sorry about that. What'd you say?
Want to be prorated into this new contract?
Will it be prorated or will that charge be on top of this?
So what I can tell you is the first year, you'll notice, the first year, the payment is lower than years two through five, obviously. Exxon's willing to do that for us because that's what we already owe them under the current contract in 2020 this year. Um, that's what we owe next month. So by doing that, there won't be an immediate financial impact for us, if that makes sense. That's what they're willing to do. And obviously the difference, the increase will be felt and spread across years two through five. So there would be no immediate financial impact. That's what we already owe Exxon under the current contract.
Now, quick question. Um, so for the current one, are you saying that we're going to pay that out of, uh, forfeiture and then the rest of them out of, uh, uh, contractual services? Because that, the way that it's written, it says all of the contractual services. That's why, uh, I haven't assessed the entire impact of this yet. I wasn't presented with these numbers.
Do you want, you guys want to table this?
I want to table, just, I want to.
Assess the numbers?
One thing I will say is the reason we're presenting this now is because we have early adapters, discounted pricing that included in this contract that was proposed. We lose that September 1st. So September 1st, we would lose the early adapters pricing and all these numbers would go up. So I can't give you, uh, my Exxon rep, sales representative, it's actually on Zoom. I don't know if he could provide you specific figures, but it would go up.
Yeah, go ahead, madam clerk.
We, we believe that this is, this is the cheapest, this is going to cost now.
Captain, do you know his name?
Yeah, Kyle Heights, you guys met him at the demo days. You also met him.
She can unmute him.
Kyle Heights, he was also here for the, uh, study session in May.
Captain, did you say September 1st?
September 1st, we lose the early adapters discount, yeah.
Hi, councilor Howard, everybody this afternoon.
Pretty good yourself?
Doing well. Uh, thanks for having me. Yeah, captain, I appreciate it. Uh, the early adapters incentive pricing is just under $400,000, so $398,000 and some change. And another piece regarding that September 1st date, September 1st is when, uh, the invoice from your current agreement will be issued. Um, and so by doing this prior to September 1st, it allows us to leverage the funds that are currently budgeted towards the Exxon contract, towards the, the upgrade, and intention of taking advantage of some of those savings. So that's kind of where that September 1st date is, is important. This is allowing us to tap into existing budget dollars with no impact in the, uh, 2025 fiscal year, um, as well as those early adapter savings.
Thank you, Mr. Height, for the information, but we kind of, we need to assess some information, some numbers here. Is there any possible way we can push it two more weeks for the next meetings until our comptroller department can assess those numbers, if you don't mind?
Yeah, I mean, obviously if, if approving this now is not on the table, it's a conversation we can certainly bring back next month.
We need two more weeks. We'll, we'll have this back on the table next meeting.
Yeah, so next meeting on September 10th, we'll have it and I'll have a outlined financial plan for it to see where we're going to be funding this from.
Are, are you okay with that, Mr. Heights?
Yeah, if that's what the council needs, then, then we're certainly willing to work with you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just, just let me say, we are also in the process of seeking out grants, securing grants. We have identified some grants through MMRMA that, uh, we've secured several grants from them in the past. We have a good working relationship with them. Uh, we've already identified some, but we can't apply for them until October. We feel confident we'll, we'll get some of them that will also help towards this. I just, I would just hate to lose any type of discount or anything, you know, because the longer we wait, the more this goes up.
No, that's excellent, captain.
If we can't get this done this year and we gotta wait till next year, it's gonna.
No, no, thank you very much. We're just gonna, we got the okay from Mr. Heights. We're going to extend it two more weeks. Mehdi's gonna, you know, do his numbers and we'll bring it back in two weeks, madam clerk, if you don't mind. Uh, any more discussion from anybody or are we okay with tabling this?
Yes.
We'll get discounts from MMRMA also for the cameras and so forth. We'll get discounts from our insurance carriers.
Well, we, we've already identified some grants that we're going to apply for. That applies strictly to in-car cameras, body worn cameras, tasers, and we, but the deadline to apply for those is not till October. So I can't tell you right now, we've already applied for them and, and we're going to get them. We, we feel confident we'll, we'll get them. We've got some in the past, good relationship with MMRMA, but we can't apply. Like the deadlines are October. So even if we apply tomorrow, we gotta wait till October. That's when the deadline is and that's when they start awarding the grant. So.
Captain, I, uh, I fully support this, but let's get a plan in place.
Council people, please go through, before speaking, councilman, councilman, are you okay, are you done?
Councilman, I'm out. I've asked three times to speak and you cut us off.
He was speaking.
Yes, he cuts us off all the time.
Councilman Saab, go through that chair, please. Councilman Constant, are you done?
I'm done.
Are you all set? Councilman Saab?
I'm not all set. I'd like to speak, sir.
Go ahead.
You wanted to shut us off and take it to a table. We have questions too.
We're still in discussion, Councilman Saab. Councilman Constant was still speaking, please.
He was not.
No, he was.
No, he was not.
No, he was.
No.
He was. And I said to everybody to go through that chair for the last time, Councilman Saab.
Right, directly, you keep interrupting me.
Let's keep it respectful, please.
You keep interrupting.
It's your time now, go ahead.
You keep interrupting. I'm actually, I want to take this to the vote. I want to, I want to, I want to put a motion on this.
It's not, it's not your motion. Councilman, uh, Constant, you had a motion. Would you like to refer this back to the administration?
Yeah, to get it quickly approved, yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by councilwoman, uh, Malowski Maxwell?
It was yours. It was yours.
Was it mine?
Yeah, you and Constant.
Then I'll change my motion to refer it back to the administration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilman Constant?
Yes.
Let's take it to a vote. Whoever is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Madam clerk, please take pro con.
Denise Malonowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
No.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
And Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Motion carries 51.
Thank you, motion carries. Uh, moving on, there's no petition from citizens, no 11, no 12, uh, new businesses, 13A.
Council chair.
Councilwoman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the placement of a no left turn sign on Fenton at the northbound entrance of the Half Circle Drive of the Star Academy football field as outlined in 13A. Second.
Uh, motion by councilwoman Malowski Maxwell, seconded by councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? I see none. Whoever is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Madam clerk, please take pro con.
Hassan Saab?
No, is there a traffic study done on this?
Do you have any to keep? Can we still go back to discussion?
No.
Okay, go ahead. Just take the vote, madam clerk.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Constant?
Yes.
Denise Malonowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you, madam clerk. Going to 13B, temporary food truck, tent, cart license renewal application, Bayrock Taco Truck.
Council chair.
Councilwoman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck, tent, cart license renewal application for Bayrock Taco Truck as outlined in 13B.
Second.
Uh, motion by councilwoman Malonowski Maxwell, seconded by councilman Constant. Any discussion? I see none. Whoever is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to 13C, temporary food truck, tent, cart license renewal application, Smash.
Council chair.
Councilwoman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck, tent, cart license renewal application for Smashed as outlined in 13C.
A motion by councilwoman Malonowski Maxwell, do I have a second by councilwoman Breyer? Any discussion? Whoever is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to 13D, business license renewal, Rusted Crowe Distillery.
Council chair.
Councilwoman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license renewal for Rusted Crowe Distillery located at 6056 North Holograph as outlined in 13D.
A motion by councilwoman Malonowski Maxwell, seconded by, seconded by councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on 13D? I see none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to, uh, comments from council members. Any comments from council members?
Council chair.
Go ahead.
I just learned last Wednesday at our, uh, study session that one of our ordinance officers has been suspended for a while. And I think it's really bad that the timing is now when we need everybody on track.
Any more comments from council members?
Council chair.
Uh, go ahead, councilman.
Our children are back in school. As to echo what I saw, our councilman Hassan Saab post, please slow down. We don't, we don't need a child hit and hurt or killed.
Thank you, councilman. Any more comments from council members?
Council Pro Tem?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone wasn't here at the beginning of the meeting, I made an announcement that, uh, my name's going to be on the ballot for reelection for city council, uh, in November. However, I, I will not, will not be seeking the seat. I will turn it down. So an area resident out there that votes, their vote is very important and you have to make it count. So please don't vote for me in November. I won't be accepting the seat. Vote for the other candidates that you choose. Um, I want to thank all the people that have supported me in my eight years on city council and all my years involving with the city of Dearborn Heights. On, on another note, uh, the Jamie's Kids Nonprofit is holding a second annual family fun fair Saturday, this Saturday, August 30th, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. It's an event where we have free barbecue picnic, balloon, magician clown, bounce houses, DJ, face painting, rock painting, free raffle prizes, cakewalk, free drinks, make your own ice cream Sunday, golf clinic, soccer clinic, lacrosse clinic, hourly bingo, limbo contest. And it is a Hawaiian theme. Wear a Hawaiian shirt and you get a special prize. And everything in the, all day to everyone is completely free, food and everything. I hope to see everyone there at 10:00 AM at Swapka Park. That's behind OW Best at school at, uh, 5499 McKinley Street, Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Any more comments from council members? Well, I'm going to have to wish everybody a happy Labor Day. Have a nice weekend. Tomorrow, uh, there's an event at the police department from 5:00 to 7:00. It's back to school safety and overdose awareness. Everybody is welcome. Uh, they're going to have free giveaways, uh, sweet treats, ice cream. Uh, so I hope I can see many of you over there tomorrow between 5:00 and 7:00. And I know some of our favorite seniors is going to be there to help too. Uh, so if I see no more comments from council members?
I got comments.
Go ahead, councilman.
So again, keep fighting about and talking about blight. You see your neighbor's house or any residents that have blight issues, please report it. If nothing's good done, email one of the council members. Make sure to get that school zones, uh, schools started. Slow down on school zones. And, uh, hopefully, uh, we won't have any, uh, serious problems with, uh, kids crossing streets like we do every year here. And last, I just want to say something. When I ask to speak to something and council chair or council pro tem does not allow to share, I have questions. And a question for the guy, for Exxon, that's why I have questions. I asked three times. But it seems like everybody's in a rush to go home. I'm not. We wait, we represent the residents, we represent every resident. I'm not in a rush to go home. I wanted my questions answered, not to bring it back in two weeks. I wanted to know the answers tonight since he was on Zoom. It seems like you're in a rush to go home, council pro tem.
Council Saab, are you?
Thank you.
Yep. I'm not in a rush to go home. And all I ask to go through that chair when you'd like to speak. Everybody was speaking at the same time, and that's not going to happen.
Well, I actually.
So next time you go through that chair, councilman Saab, before you speak. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you very much. Moving on to announcement from, uh, directors or city officials.
Council chair, Pro Tem? Yes, I'd just like to wish all of our labors here in the United States a very safe and, um, thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you very much, madam clerk. Madam treasurer?
Hello. Good evening, honorable council members and residents. Um, speaking as treasurer, Lisa Hicks Clayton. Three things real quick to, um, answer councilman Wenzel's question that he raised on 6A with claims. If there is any general ledger, I check those, a check that comes forward that's exhausted, I will reassure you, I do not sign those checks and I send them back. So that is the answer to that. That's my job. That's what I do. The second thing I wanted to, um, let everyone know is I've got two events coming up. The first one is the Scoops and Smiles, which is also Saturday, August 30th, 2:00 PM at Custard Hut. This is a chance to come enjoy some ice cream, compliments of the treasurer, a good time to chat, talk, get to know who I am, and I get to know you and to hear your concerns and questions. And I can answer any questions you have about the treasurer's office. And of course, I always want to say, no public funds are used for that. Um, the other thing I have coming up, real, really excited about this, this is really new, is the Michigan Department of Treasury and your city of Dearborn Heights treasurer's office. Here we go, this is for you guys, pass out. Uh, we're partnering for a, the MI Money Matters is financial literacy program. We've been working on this one. This is for all ages. So it is from like, you know, high school on through our seniors, all the different financial checkup, money personality, budget tools, how to borrow money, what that looks like borrowing smart. So, um, this is a really exciting education program, hands-on, interactive learning. And that is going to be on Monday, September the 8th, 7:00 PM at the Carolyn Kennedy Library. We're going to be posting flyers everywhere, but the, what I gave the council tonight, we have these at different locations, including the treasurer's office. We'll get them to the libraries and senior centers as well. And hopefully maybe to some of our seniors in high schools, because they need to know before they go get that credit card, how that works. But this is a great way you could scan the QR code and see what the programs are all about. This is really exciting, really new program. And Dearborn Heights, we, um, you know, I called them up and said, hey, we want to do this. And we're like a pilot, you know, we get to be one of the first communities to do this in the state of Michigan. So I wanted to share that with everybody. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, madam treasurer. Any more comments from?
Council Pro Tem?
Go ahead, councilman.
Uh, just a word, uh, Lisa Hicks Clayton, our treasurer, she is part of our family fund day. She is presenting the, uh, back to school giveaway, uh, items. And, uh, as of now, we still need some more items. If anybody's interested in donating back to school items, they can contact the treasurer's office and make arrangements to have them dropped off or picked up. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I see no more comments.
Council chair.
Yes. Councilwoman.
Yeah, announcements.
It's around.
Tomorrow night is, uh, the Ecorus Creek Commission, 6:00 PM at 3335 South Beach Daily. Hopefully we'll get updated on some things. And more importantly, on Thursday, the 28th, we will have a forum on the four or five council members running and also the two people running for the treasures at 7:00 PM, 3335 South Beach Daily, the Westwood 3335 South Beach Daily, the Westwood School Board meeting, their building. So hope to see some of you there.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Definitely will be there. Moving on to public comments, you have, please state your name, the street you live on, the city, you have three minutes.
Marjorie Pasquale, Syracuse Street. I was just curious, I didn't know, I was surprised to hear about this little water monitor, and I was just curious for my own self. So what, I can, I can understand it monitors the water, when we have heavy rains, whatever, but what happens? I mean, how does it benefit us? Does it, a siren go off when it goes so high, or does it notify somehow electronically to the fire department, and the fire department tells a certain area that's going to be flooded? Or what use is it?
That's a good point.
Are you all set, ma'am? That's, that's your question? Thank you. You can answer, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, it, it collects data, it tells, it's a, from the federal government, it keeps and collects data, and it does warn if the level of the creek or the Rouge River goes up.
Who's it warning?
No, no, it's pretty much a monitor, just to monitor like the level of the, of the creek and how much water coming in. Just enough.
The, the data's transmitted, amongst other things, to the city engineer, to the city. But it's, it's a, it's a program run in a service from the federal government.
Council Pro Tem.
Are you all set, Councilman?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I think she was wondering if there was any kind of notice given to the residents when water gets high. I, I don't think that happens. I don't think there's any notice up there. I'm sure, ma'am, is that what you want to know, if there was any notice?
Mariana, go ahead.
Council Chair. Yes, so again, this is a website, actually, so anyone can access it, but when we know that there are rain events that are going to happen in the city, the emergency manager, the police department, everybody has access to view it, so they're monitoring what those levels are so that we know whether or not the city will face a flooding situation.
Chief of Staff, do you know that website? Maybe you can say it on record?
It's just the USGS.
So everybody can?
USGS.gov.
USGS.gov?
Yeah.